Thank you. I now call this April 26, 1999, Halton City City Council meeting to order. I'd like to welcome all those in the audience and also special welcome to those watching VHCTV. Our invocation, Pledge of Allegiance this evening will begin by, our invocation will begin by Councilmember John Williams followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would please all stand at this time.
Our heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings you give us, Lord. We thank you for the blessings on Halton City. We pray for the troubled times we have in the world right now, Lord. We pray that you reach in, use your divine in hand, Lord, help bring peace. Pray for this panel as we vote in the city's business tonight. We pray they'll have open minds and open hearts, Lord. We pray that we do what's best for the city. Pray for our children, Lord. Pray to keep their safety. Help us to teach them, be good examples for them. We ask these things in thy name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under request and presentation, agenda item number one, ninth, pardon me, Ninth Annual National Night Out 5K Run. We have two ladies here that want to make a presentation to, and I won't even say who so you can just totally surprise them.
Is that up here?
Yeah, right there, yes ma'am.
Hi, honorable councilmembers, and we're very happy to be here. I'm Lizanne Peters, and I'm the Chair of the Child Protective Services Arm of a charitable organization called Cash for Kids Community Partners. And with me is our community staff person, Lisa Hill. And we're here tonight to recognize some of your police officers. I know a lot of you are into National Night Out, and this year is our 10th anniversary. And our Night Out run is going to be held on June 26 at River Legacy Park in Arlington. The police departments of Arlington, Collieville, Halton City, Bedford, North Richland Hills, and the Precinct 2 City Constable's Office host this 5K and 1-mile fun run-walk every year. Proceeds from the National Night Out run are donated to Cash for Kids, which is a nonprofit organization. It helps provide for special needs of children who have been victims of abuse and neglect in Tarrant County. It also helps fund local child abuse and neglect prevention and intervention programs. Last year, the National Night Out run donated over $5,000 to the abused and neglected children in Tarrant County. We therefore would like to recognize Officer Mike Wilson and Sergeant Gene Rolle for their, with these plaques of appreciation and for their continued support and services. And we'd also like to encourage all of you to come participate in the run, and we'll make sure that you get some flyers so that you can. And we'd like Gene to come forward, and I understand her, Mike is not here, but he's doing good business in crime prevention, I know.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Agenda number two, Volunteer of the Year Presentation, official presentation Volunteer of the Year nominations, and also the Senior Community Volunteer of the Year. Fran Burns, are you?
There you are.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, council and staff, for letting us come again this year to recognize some of our outstanding community volunteers. It's always a treat for us to be able to recognize some of these people that make Halton City such a great community. Each year, we cooperate with United Way of Metropolitan Tarrant County to choose a city honoree. We take nominations from our residents, and we assemble a committee to select the Volunteer of the Year, and they're also volunteers. And this year, we came up, of course, with our community's Volunteer of the Year, along with the Senior Volunteer of the Year. And because our honoree has to leave to go volunteer, we're going to start with him. So Donna Larson is one of the nominators of Tommy Sanderson. She's going to come forward and tell you a little bit about what this fine gentleman does for Halton City.
I'm not a public speaker, but this is real important to me because of the, just the things that Tommy has done in the community, and I'll just highlight some of the things that were in my letter. He serves as the block captain in his neighborhood for his crime watch. He's the chairman to me on the Crime Prevention Board. He participates and plans activities that are related to youth, serves on the Defy Board, DARE Parent-to-Parent, Students at Risk, and was very instrumental with the Defy kickoff last year at YMCA, which was really a big success. He attended, I think, all of the carnivals at the elementary schools last year with our DARE officer to promote the neighborhood crime watches. And every time I'm at North Oaks, I see him up there. He's up there all the time. He serves as the Health and Safety Representative for PTA, chaperones, student activity nights, and has put together several programs, one being Street Smart for Ladies and Gang Awareness, which he did at the library last year. And one of the things that we got to do last year because of Tommy was, it was our first year for the Crime Prevention Board, to participate in the homecoming parade. He picked up the float, helped decorate it, drove it, and took it back, I think. He did almost all of that. He has a deep concern and love for the youth in our city, and our children couldn't have a greater role model. When I think of the word dedicated, I think of Tommy Sanderson. He gets behind whatever he's involved in 100 percent and deserves to be the honored 1998 Volunteer of the Year.
Like Donna and Fran said, I'm off somewhere. I've got the bin sworn in tonight at Halton High School as the new president of their PTA. So hate to leave this crowd and everything, but I've got to slide out and get over there. I got double booked. Thank y'all very much. And Donna, thank you, and we're going to miss you. Bye.
Sergeant Raul also nominated Tommy Sanderson. Our second honoree this evening is our Senior Volunteer of the Year, and his name is Harry DeBose. And I'd like him to come forward while I read what was written about him. This man has been volunteering for 47 years. He's active in Birdville Baptist Church Kitchen Duty. Goes every Wednesday afternoon to the Manor Care Nursing Center to present a lesson and have prayer with the residents. He takes people home from church who cannot drive. For the past 10 years, he's been a volunteer guardian for Tarrant County. He volunteers for the South Birdville Mission in the park. He teaches children about God, and he works part-time for the, I'm sorry, I can't read that, something Bureau.
I'm not sure what you're saying.
You're not sure?
I might be volunteering for other things, though. And I just had a man call me this morning to volunteer in the morning for him. He's going to have to be somewhere else. So I do quite a few.
So Harry's very active, and we're proud of him, our Senior Volunteer of the Year.
All right.
Well, I want to thank everybody in the council chamber, all the council members, and all the people from Halton City. And I just give God the glory.
Amen.
Because, excuse me, he's given me good health, and I figured that as long as I had good health, I would continue volunteering for Halton City, which has been my home for 43 years now. And I truly and dearly love living here in Halton City. Thank you very much.
Now, I'm going to call Joe Wright to the podium. She's going to describe another volunteer's activities.
It was my pleasure to have nominated Diane McGee this year's Volunteer of the Year. I've had the pleasure of working with her on the Beautification Board and the Garden Club, and I know what a dedicated volunteer she really is. She is currently serving as Treasurer of the Halton City Beautification Board. Also, she is Treasurer of the Garden Club. And she is Chairman of the Law Enforcement for the Board, which includes ordinance evaluation and crime prevention. And she just finished a video interview with...
What is it?
David Jackson.
David Jackson. And I've not had the opportunity to view that yet, but I was told that from this one lady, as she was watching it, she kept hearing this little voice saying, "Barbara Walters, move over." She did an excellent job. And it was really my pleasure to have
nominated her for Volunteer of the Year.
Well, thank you, councilmembers and Halton City. And I'm not Barbara Walters. I am not a speaker. I just want to do the work. Thank you.
All right. Now, we need Kathy Sorenson to come and speak about her nominee.
We've nominated two young men at the library who come faithfully every week. And so they're Jared Burke and John Fuentes. They volunteered at the Halton City Public Library on an average of eight to 15 hours per week since October 1998 and December 1997 respectfully, and continue on a regular basis. During these past months, they have shelved countless cartloads of books and videos in addition to preparing books and videos for checkout. The hour spent in making pocket labels, spine labels, research and bibliographic information, and covering these books and videos purchased for the public to use have allowed the staff to perform other job responsibilities and tasks. Mr. Burke's and Mr. Fuentes' interaction with the staff is always congenial and friendly. Their commitment to community service reflects positive and conscientious examples of responsibility and dependability.
Halton City is a nice place to work for. It's a pleasure to help out. Just happy to be here.
Our next honoree is Kim Kirby, and I know that she's here. So come on up, Kim.
Last row.
Come on up. The person who nominated her is Betty Porter. She couldn't be with us tonight, but Betty said that Kim has been on the park board for quite some time and that she's been at all the events of the park board sponsors such as the Easter egg hunt, the Halloween carnival, the Dare Run, and the Halton Stampede. And we just appreciate Kim very much because without volunteers that turn out for these things, we just couldn't put them on. So congratulations, Kim. I just wanted to say thank you, and thank you to Councilman Williams for my appointment. I wouldn't be able to do this without you.
You can still volunteer. I would like to point out that Mrs. McGee was my appointment as well.
Is Georgine Jackson here this evening? She had called and said she would be here, but I think she is not. She probably couldn't make it this evening. But she was nominated by Bobby Arthur of the Senior Center as another Senior Volunteer of the Year. Also nominated was Vicki Kayes. She is not here this evening, but she is a full-time non-employee of WT Francisco Elementary. She is always there and always doing things with the kids and helping with their programs. Another nominee is Shirley Gangware. She's a longtime member of the Beautification Board. And last summer, you could have found Shirley out in the over 100-degree temperatures watering trees on Highway 377, and among other things. And she's just very dedicated, very thorough, and a great example for the rest of us. And then the last nominee was Gary Clark, and I think a lot of people know Gary Clark. He's on our Civil Service Board and a longtime Birdville resident and a great volunteer. So for all of these people, and those even that were not nominated, we want to say thank you very much, and we look forward to seeing some more good news next year. Thank you.
I'll just point out that mayors aren't eligible to win, just, you know.
Oh, well, that went over better in pre-council.
Way over.
Way over, okay. Agenda three is a proclamation proclaiming May 6 as National Day of Prayer. And I'm going to read this into the record, and I believe we have gentlemen that might even want to say a word or two about that. Whereas the quality of life in the communities in which we live is largely reflected in the commitment and dedication demonstrated by the actions of the members in the community, there are inevitably numerous ways for individuals to express their vision, intelligence, and imagination. And whereas the National Day of Prayer was first proclaimed by the Continental Congress in 1775, whereas prayer is an expression of an individual's thoughts, hopes, or dreams, the Day of Prayer in Halton City allows us to come together as a group and express our thoughts as one body, whereas the power of prayer and the power of God through prayer have been the core of the shared American experience throughout history. Now, therefore, our Gary Larson, as mayor of the city of Halton City, do hereby proclaim May 6, 1999, as a Day of Prayer in Halton City. And this is into the record.
And, who's the gentleman?
John Booker, are you here?
Yeah, he's there.
I really do appreciate being able to say a word in behalf of the National Day of Prayer, and I want to say thank you to Gary Larson and to our city council. I think this speaks very well of our city council that this was, that this proclamation was made. And I want to say a special thank you to Gene Henshrling, who's been working with the Halton City Ministers Alliance. And through his efforts, we're going to have about eight or 10 churches at least, perhaps more. There was a number of letters that went out this week to quite a large number of our churches encouraging them to open their doors from 12 o'clock until 2 o'clock for prayer, for this National Day of Prayer. And so I just wanted to make the city of Halton City aware that this is going to be going on, and I believe there's going to be a listing on the Halton City Cable TV channel, giving the names, addresses, and the phone numbers of these churches. I wanted to close my remarks and read something that one of our sixth graders at North Oaks Middle School wrote in her journal this week. I'm not going to read all of this, but I want to read the part that really pertains to what I want to say here, or what I think we need to be focused on. And it's entitled, "In God We Trust, Why Should We Not Be Allowed to Pray When Our Loose Change Says 'In God We Trust'? Maybe the unbearable scar in Littleton, Colorado, may not have happened if they had said, 'In God We Trust.'" I'm going to fight to get God back into my school because I just can't bear to have a horror like Littleton happen at North Oaks Middle School. And I know how we could stop it from happening, and that is through a little thing called prayer. I want to encourage our community to listen to our children out of the mouth of babes, as it were. And I want to encourage you, as men of influence in our community, to be about, perhaps in some way promoting this National Day of Prayer. And I want to encourage the city of Halton City to take part in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Tremendous amount of wisdom by a sixth-grade student. We're going to do a little moving on the agenda to move something up that might be some people here for, but agenda 18, Northeast Optimist Park with the request for waiver of utility services. We're going to move that up to this point in the agenda. Mr. Eisen, you want to brief us on where we're at on this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the council's last meeting, you had asked that the staff do some evaluation of the cost of providing water and wastewater service to the Northeast Optimist baseball facility located just off Denton Highway. We've had an opportunity to do that. The annual cost of providing water and wastewater service to that location is slightly under $1,000. The council had asked for that information specifically to determine whether or not you wanted to enter into a formal agreement with the Northeast Optimists to, in exchange for them providing the services that they have been providing for a number of years, of providing baseball and recreational opportunities to the children of the community, to, in return for that, provide water and wastewater service to NEO at no additional cost or no cost to them. If you do choose to do that, we'd recommend a couple of things at the staff level. One, that we enter into a formal contract to ensure that all of the legalities are dealt with, and also that the amount of the annual waiver be limited to $1,000, which would cover the costs that were incurred in the past 12 months.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Eisen. Any comment from council? Councilmember Henshrling?
Well, I'll get the ball rolling, I guess. You know, we talked about, I know this has kind of come up in the past, but I really kind of feel that this, what we're looking at doing here for NEO, really does fall into the category of a professional service in terms of the service that NEO is providing for the kids, not only of our community but some neighboring communities. And this is a service that we do provide for our children through our association programs. But if NEO was not to be doing what it does, we would not be able to accommodate all those additional children. So this is in a way to support NEO. It's a small way to help them in their efforts out there as they work with our youth of our community. And if they weren't taking care of that property out there, we certainly would have to. And that would be another burden on our Park and Rec Department grounds to maintain. So I'd be ready to make a motion if there's, we've got a couple more we want to speak, but we'll yield back when you're ready. Councilmember Hart?
I was going to say, I have a, I have a little misgivings, I guess, on this particular one. One of the problems I have is that NEO serves children other than just from our city. And to take on a burden of 100 percent of the cost, I have a problem with that. There's a lot of people from Wataga and other cities. I would, I would go along with a compromise of perhaps half the value at $500 because another problem I have is there's a lot of other nonprofit organizations that are doing things out throughout our city, and we're not giving them any economic help either. So that'd be my problem, is I would go with $500, but I would have to vote no if it's the full amount.
Okay. Councilor Quinones?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to take what seems to be the unpopular position and say that I don't think we need to extend these funds to the group. And the reasons are a few primarily. We've had this problem or issue come up before with regards to nonprofit groups. In the past, the city has made contributions off and on to various nonprofit groups. But I believe in this particular case, we would be setting a bad precedent. Because I agree with Mr. Hart that there are a lot of nonprofit agencies and entities working out there that can make a, I think, a fair and just claim to having some kind of support for whatever they're doing. I think every one of them can say, "If we weren't there, then, you know, it wouldn't get done, or this would be lacking." I think every one of them can make that claim. But I have a real problem with this, given the fact that, while I agree many non-residents use or participate in NEO, the same is true with our own programs on our own park that are city-sponsored. And I think we need to look at that as well and see how that can be adjusted. But I feel very uncomfortable agreeing to subsidize a water bill at this point for a private group, which perhaps for reasons that I'm not aware of, does not want to raise their fee or adjust their fee with those who willingly participate with them. I think that they do an admirable job, and they grow every year, and they get a lot of participation, and they're a very active organization. But I, I just have a real problem with doing that, given the resources we have. And I know it seems unpopular, come out and say, "You don't want to do this," because it seems like whenever something affecting the kids is mentioned, that that freezes out debate, and you can't bring it up. But I think it, I think we're going down the wrong road if we do this, not to downplay what they do. And I realize that, you know, some may be upset with my opinion on that, but that's just my view. I don't expect the city to provide, you know, we can find ways to entertain and provide for kids. And I'm not discounting that that's being done. But I think that we are setting a bad precedent if we do this. And I would prefer that we not vote for it, even in any form.
Thank you. Councilman Williams?
I guess I've sort of got a couple of questions and a couple of statements. One, a gentleman at NEO had approached me about this and told me about the expenditure that had. And they do get money from the participants. Either participants that come from outside the city pay a fee to pay there, likewise our own citizens. But if they weren't there performing that, that would be, I think Mr. Stripmadder told me something like 1,100, 1,200 children involved, or people involved in that association down there. So that would be 1,100 people that we would have to cycle in somewhere else, or provide a service somewhere else. The legal question, I guess I have for the attorney, is he down there?
He's here.
Okay. This came up, I guess, about six months ago is when we came up with the first really problem with this, as far as donating city funds. If I remember your quote right, our charter prohibits us from distributing any funds to any private organization. It'd be like giving the citizens' monies away without them having to say so to do it. But I believe you told me in the same, same night at the council meeting, that if we received some sort of service, or received something for our money, that we would be able to legally do that. Can you enlighten us on that, or?
Certainly.
I'm glad it shows that you were listening to me when I was advising you every once in a while. As Mr. Eisen has pointed out, in order for the council to legally be able to vote on this matter tonight, you would have to determine that this, this organization is performing a public service, which would be a public purpose that the city of Halton City could perform, and that they would be doing it on behalf of the city of Halton City. And as Mr. Eisen advised you, we would recommend that you actually enter into an agreement with this organization to clarify the terms of the service in exchange for what we are calling a waiver, but in effect, what we're doing is agreeing that they would be performing at least $1,000 worth of services on behalf of the city of Halton City. So basically, it's two-tiered. First off, you have to determine that what the Northeast Optimists are doing is something that you would recommend that the city council do if they were not doing it for the city, and that you enter into a specific agreement to clarify those exact services that you are requiring of them in exchange for the waiver of the water and sewage. are requiring of them in exchange for the waiver of the water and sewer fees.
And I'll reserve my second question to the city manager. Do you feel that this organization is doing us enough service that we could legally do this, in your opinion?
Well, in my legal opinion...
Not in your legal opinion, just do you feel like they're doing enough? You understand what I'm saying?
I think what they're doing clearly provides a service that if they were not doing, either a lot of kids wouldn't benefit from it, or we would be doing it ourselves. Let me point out also that the Director of Finance has just indicated to me, relayed to me from our financial advisor who is here this evening, that in our bond covenants, we have a prohibition against giving away water service, so we would have to couch this in different terms, probably as reimbursement. But I think it's important that we're a little careful, and I did not realize that until Mr. McClainy had just pointed out to us. So we may have to structure it slightly differently. But basically, it boils down, I think, not to a question of whether or not this is an important need, it clearly is. I think it boils down to the issues that have been raised. Are you setting some kind of precedent that you couldn't or wouldn't want to live with as you face other similar types of requests? And I know there's nothing exactly like this situation, there are some that'll probably be similar, and what you do this evening may have a lot to do with whether or not you hear some more requests of this nature. And again, I think it comes down to that as much as it does whether or not the valuable service is provided, because there's no question that a valuable service is provided.
Okay. The, what brought this up, I believe, was the Hands-on Education, and a couple of other people had came in and had wanted money from us, and we turned them down due to the city charter. And at that time is when our attorney told us that if it was a service they were performing for us, and we would do it. I believe the Hands-on Education and one of the other programs was a limited amount of students, 100 or less, and this is probably gonna affect 1,100, 1,200 people. So we're looking at 90, if we put $1,000 ceiling, we're looking at 90 cents per kid, 92, 93 cents. So I guess it would just, we'd have to weigh up, and the city manager felt like it was a service that was worth the money, and it would probably be feasible to do it if he did feel like it.
Yeah, put him on a hot seat.
I don't mind. Are you up for reelection, Mr. City Manager?
Every month.
But that's all I have.
Every two weeks.
Every two weeks.
I just want to point out to the council that, first of all, we, the city used to pay the entire water bill for NEO, but also to keep in mind that we have other groups doing the exact same service in town, that we're providing the field, the water, the electricity, and everything else for these groups. And if you call into the question, you know, is this, are we helping a private organization? So is the Little Miss softball, and all, and the Pee-wee football, and all that, that are using our fields, and that we're watering and we're paying electric bill for free? So, I mean, this is a little different. I mean, we've got some other organizations that are getting a greater benefit than NEO's asking for. Just, you know, just wanted to throw that out. Councilmember Watkins?
Let me begin by saying I really don't know exactly how this works, but your first suggestion is if we do this, that we enter into a contract, that the program will be available to Holtham City youth. How do you guarantee that's going, how do you know? How are you gonna keep tabs on that?
Well, it has been for 30 years.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I said it already has been for about 30 years, and I know us, so I'm sure it probably won't continue, but all we're doing is doing the legal aspects, from my understanding, if we were to extend this offer to them. Is that right, Wayne?
That's correct.
Are you saying they're not turned away?
Right, they're not turned away. It's open enrollment down there, I know that.
The other thing I was kind of curious about was, are the, I know that we have sponsored teams before bought uniforms or some such thing as that, and do they charge their participants?
Very happily.
So is this a hardship thing? They don't charge, they don't have enough money left over after what they charge? Is that what we're saying?
I don't know if that's what they're saying or not, Gene. If you have him or inside or John, let me know.
I'm Nancy.
No, I was asking them as a reference point.
I'm John.
The question to them, Nancy, was, were they able to answer your question better?
I'm sorry, just a minute, we probably shouldn't be doing this.
Yeah.
My other question was, do they charge the participants? And is it that they're not charging enough? I mean, is this a hardship thing?
What they conveyed to me before this, they'd asked me several months ago, and, I mean, obviously, they said they can keep raising their fees, and, but it is, you know, the cost of doing that business, providing that service, is growing, and they're asking for a little relief. I believe all the youth organizations, you know, even the ones that use our fields for free, that are not maintaining their own fields and what have you, they're charging their youth as well.
So their fees won't go up if we grant them?
I don't know if that's a fair, but they probably wouldn't go up as much. I don't know, you know, I haven't ever been to one of their meetings to know how it actually works, to be honest with you.
We, is that, is that city land? They own the land?
We own the porch, don't we?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Quinones?
A couple of more points. I think Mr. Williams made the point, if there's 1,200 kids, and it comes to less than a dollar per child at the proposed rate, and I'll, I mean, we as a policy, every city has a policy for years, has decided to have city leagues, and that's what we have. If there's a question about whether we should be subsidizing out-of-town residents in our city park system, I think we need to look at that, and look at the fee structure regarding that. That's a separate issue from my point of view. If we're paying, providing free services for them, we need to look at that and see what we can do to adjust that. But I have a hard time, if it's less than a dollar per child, that if they can't come up with that, then either they do have a genuine hardship, or there will be, you know, more requests in the future of a nature of we're not sure of or amount. And I just, I just have a real, again, a real difficulty with doing this. I mean, we can, I think the ordinance is a public purpose, and quite frankly, we can find, I mean, what is it we hear? If we save one child, we've done some good? Well, everybody can say that. Everybody can point to that. And I know that sounds crass, but I think everybody can do that. And if you say, well, there's only 100 people in Hands-on Education, so are we gonna say that only the big organizations can come and ask for subsidies, but the little ones can't? I don't feel comfortable doing that. And if it's only a dollar increase, quite frankly, I think that, you know, I wasn't here in years past when they did it, but wasn't even aware that we were paying that water bill, but I think I would have a hard time doing it. And again, I would just recommend just denial of the request.
Thank you. Councilmember Art?
I just was gonna say one last time, but I guess probably about a third of the kids going to NEO or Holtham City residents, the rest are from Wataga Hurst and North Richland and other cities. So I don't feel right about paying all the water bill, or entering them with a contract. I would say, again, I would go with $500, which is half of it, let them go to some of the other cities that the children are coming to that field, and let them go get the rest of the money from them. So anyway, my vote depends on the motion.
Okay. Councilmember Hensley?
I just wanna throw out a couple more things, answer a few questions that were asked. Councilmember Watkins had asked if the land belongs to Holtham City. Presently, it doesn't, but if NEO was not active, the land would be deeded back to Holtham City, and it would be our responsibility. So just to...
The land does not belong to Holtham City?
The land does not belong to Holtham City.
Part of the, when it was donated to NEO...
It was donated to NEO, but...
With the stipulation that should NEO cease to exist, it would then revert to the City of Holtham City.
And with the stipulation that they care for it?
Yes. No, I think that, I think if it's ours, we're gonna care for it.
If it were reversed back to the city.
Yeah, well, that makes sense. Whoever owns it should take care of it.
Right. And that was how it was presented to us, from the folks down at NEO, is they're just trying to keep from having to raise the fees to make it more, less prohibitive for more children to be involved. And to me, it's kind of a thing of equity also, as Councilmember, I don't know if it's, well, Mayor Larson had mentioned it, that we use city time, equipment, water, electric bill for all the associations that use our parks here, and we strap their fields, we drag them, we water them, we mow them, the whole nine yards, and...
It's exact same type of organization, correct?
Exact same type of organization, providing the exact same type of service. I do have a concern about opening Pandora's Box with these other groups, believe me, I do. I remember Hands-on Education, and we don't want to go there again, but I think, and I think I'm comfortable in staff and the city being able to delineate the type of services that might come before this council, and whether they are providing a legitimate service. I see, I see the service being a service provided by both the city and NEO, and so in comment to Councilmember Quinones, who's talking about an out-of-town charge, right now presently, our associations are tracking the number of kids that are coming in that are not Holtham City residents, and it will be, I know the park and rec, well, I can't say for sure, but the park and rec board is studying having our associations have out-of-town, city resident fee charged to those kids that don't belong in Holtham City. I have no idea of the status of NEO trying to do that, but we are looking into that to help fund our activities here.
Okay. Okay. I've got one request to speak from an audience member, and so if your comments can wait till after that, is that, would that be a problem? Okay. Louis Williams?
That's a good idea.
If you would just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Louis Williams. I'm 5260 Chessy Circle. I think that most of my questions have been answered, and I think that the bottom line just comes down to, are we willing to spend $1,000 of the city's money in lieu of spending money to maintain that property that's being maintained free of cost to us? That's my comment.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Councilman Iverson?
Yes, may the city manager answer. How long did we pay the water bill down there, and how long ago did we stop paying the water bill?
I don't know that we've ever paid the water bill down there. I think what's happened in the last few years is that there was not a sewer charge levied at that location, under the assumption, which turned out to be incorrect, that it was irrigation uses only, but there are some restroom and concession facilities there. And the sewer charges were added, I think, a year or two years ago. But to my knowledge, there was not a time when we did not bill for water. I may not be fully informed on that, but I don't believe that was ever the case.
I think, and I have no direct knowledge, just when we did a little dedication, and I spoke to the president of NEO, and it was probably two city managers ago that we did stop, but apparently at one point in time, it was, you know, not even a metered, you know, just whatever water they needed to maintain the fields was done. And I don't know why it stopped, but, and I don't know that he's as fully informed, but that's what I was told. Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Art?
Well, my answer, my question's already been answered, which is, do we charge fees to people using our city fields? And we do, so...
No, we don't.
We don't get any money from any association?
No. Associations levy a charge.
All they have is a league fee assessed to them.
Right, to help pay for the umpires and their league expenses, but...
Maintenance is not...
The softball groups, the Pee-wee football groups that utilize our fields pay us nothing.
Right.
And we give, we give a whole lot more than $1,000 a year in water alone, much less electricity and maintenance and staff time and all the other issues.
And then Councilmember Hensley said that the park board's looking into possibly changing that, so that was what my question was.
Yeah, we're gonna recommend that.
Yeah, and I'm in support of that, because our kids ought to play cheaper.
I agree.
But Councilmember Williams?
Yes, sir. I asked Councilmember Hensley a moment ago, as far as the people that are playing in our leagues right now that live outside, that live over, play in our park, that live outside the city, and he said that he guessed it would probably be about the same average on the people living out of the city playing in our parks as it would be over there.
Right.
And so, you know, for $1,000, I guess I'm ready to second the motion and fade the heat.
Okay. Well, let Councilmember Watkins have her final statement, and I'll yield the floor to Councilmember Hensley.
Depends what the motion is to.
Yeah, well, yeah, Gene, you may have opened Pandora's Box here.
Yeah, I was just gonna make a proposal, that perhaps they could charge a bit less to the Holtham City youth than they do to the participants from the other cities. What do you think about that?
Is that a nice way to say, and charge yet more?
Charge who?
We wouldn't go down. We'd charge the same price and go up on the others, or?
No, for this particular organization, if they, if they charged a little less to the Holtham City youth than they do to the, to the children that are from the other cities...
But that doesn't sound like it would help them.
Well, and...
They're gonna be getting less money, and they're gonna be in the same position.
I think just the accounting for that group, for 90 cents a kid, the accounting of trying to figure that out may eat up most of the benefit we're trying to give.
But didn't you say that's what they were looking into and doing now? Isn't that what you said, that the other groups were looking into?
That's for our group.
Our group, but I don't know about them at all.
Right. Well, that's what the other groups are starting to look into. That, it'll be the same nightmare.
Okay. All right, everybody's had their say. Councilmember Hensley?
Well, I'd just like to make the motion that the City of Holtham City entered a contract for services with the NEO park, to provide them an annual fee waiver for water and sewer for up to $1,000.
Would you wanna allow staff to word that in a legalistic manner?
I would prefer that, yeah.
Okay.
This is my motion.
A reimbursement up to $1,000 of the water bill, of expenses, okay. We don't want to get in trouble with our bond covenants. Okay. Councilmember Williams?
Can I add just a point of clarification? It's really for NEO to make the program available to the City of Holtham City youth.
Okay.
An amount?
An amount of annual fee?
Up to $1,000.
$1,000.
Is that a bad motion?
You're gonna have to make a dollar amount, because the city manager just said you can't do the water bill. You're gonna have to specifically state a dollar amount.
He said $1,000.
He said up to $1,000.
$1,000.
Not to exceed?
Not to exceed $1,000, or do I have to say a dollar amount, or not to exceed?
I think you're gonna have to say a dollar amount, because it'll have to be couched in terms of reimbursement for general expenses.
How about $1,000?
All right. Councilmember Williams?
Well, since I was hammered by the mayor's hotline on hating children for the last time I turned down giving money to children, I'll second that motion.
I didn't mean to call in on you, but, okay, we have motion and second. Please signify your vote. Okay, motion passes with Councilmember Quinones and Art voting against. We have a $20 million budget, if we got it, no, all right. We have to go through that much trouble. Okay, next time we announce the consent agenda, this is gonna move along a whole lot faster, I promise. We'll try. Consent agenda this evening will be consisting of Agenda Items 4 through 11, and also Agenda Item 19, which is a change order to a construction contract. I'm just gonna let them talk about it, we'll still vote together. I've got, there's gonna be comments on 5 and 6, and if there's any problems with that, we'll pull those off for separate vote, but our financial year audit, our, remember the audit firm is here this evening, Terry Kyle? If you want to say a few brief comments?
Brief, brief.
And we're not paying your water bill.
Pull the mic down.
It's not $1,000 either.
Mine is.
I am Terry Kyle, the director in the Public Sector Services Group at Deloitte and Tuch, and we performed the audit for the City of Holtham City as of and for the year ended September 30, 1998. Performed that audit in accordance to generally accepted auditing standards. And we issued three reports as a result of this audit. One is the CAFER Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which indicates the financial position for the city as of and for the year ended September 30, 1998. I think it's a very fine report, I think it looks real good. Your staff has done a great job in putting this together. The second report is a report to management. In this report, we indicate that as a part of our audit, we looked at internal controls, noted no material weaknesses in internal controls. We do have some recommendations, things we think could be done a little bit better in different ways, things to consider, and those recommendations are included in there. The third report is a SAS 61 letter, Statement on Auditing Standards Number 61, describes how we as auditors communicate to you, the city council, on how the audit went, and basically it tells you, we did receive full cooperation out of your staff, we believe that they did provide us all the records that we needed to look at during our audit, and were not hindered in that audit, and again, do appreciate their cooperation. The audit went well, again, I think that your staff produces a very fine annual report, and I would have no further comments on that, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any council members have any questions for Mr. Clark, Mr. Kyle? Sorry. Councilmember Williams?
I just want to comment on the good job that they, I get to sit in on this this year, it was very interesting to have ever done that, burying that. And I want to congratulate our staff on the work that they did, with the exception of not... our staff on the work that they did, with the exception of not including me in the city council, and we caught that and got that corrected, so.
That's why we put you on the committee, just to check up on those things.
The numbers, the numbers are fine, they just didn't put me on the council.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for your job. Well done.
Okay. Agenda Item six is another ordinance allowing the issuance and sale of quite a bit of money. Mark McClainey, our financial advisor, bond advisor, say a few brief comments.
I'm passing down some items. This is regards to the eight million, six hundred thousand dollar utility system revenue bonds that are being sold if approved by the council today. I'm handing out a debt service schedule as well as a debt comparison. The debt service schedule, which is this page, and I think the second item coming down, I just would point out two items. One is the, the beginning interest rate being two and a quarter percent in the year two thousand, which is the third column from the left, to the last maturity in two thousand nineteen, which is four point one five percent. That's an average interest rate for a twenty-year term of four point, I mean, three point seven nine percent, which there's been some comments earlier, I wish we could borrow for our home mortgages levels like that. We got insurance from FSA, Financial Security Assurance, to guarantee payment of these. They, in turn, reviewed your audits, and the council and staff need to be commended as the auditor was saying, you, you're in excellent, excellent financial shape, and it's something that you need to be commended in the city, if they're not aware, should be made aware, that you all are as good as fiscal shape as any community your size and in Tarrant County. Well, really, and in Texas, but your, your, your name, compared to your neighbors. The second page, normally what we do in a bond sale, this is the debt comparison, is we do a competitive sale where bids come in and we open them here, and we take the lowest interest rate. What we did in this instance, because it was a sewer project, wastewater project, we had an opportunity to go to the Texas Water Development Board and get a subsidized rate from, subsidy comes from the federal government. But I wanted to just to show you all the difference to understand why we went that route. The underwriting or the fee that's charged for the Texas Water Development Board is one point eight five percent. If you went to the open market, the fee is, is less. It's about a little bit less than one percent. So, under the savings column, it costs you one percent more to do it this way. However, when you look at the subsidy, in the open market, we would have been four point seven four percent, and we're actually at three point seven nine, a point nine five, or nearly one percent a year savings and interest rate. To, to put dollar amount to that, the interest cost, this is just the interest of, of borrowing eight million six for twenty years, that we went with the Texas Water Development Board is three million, eight hundred and twenty-three thousand. If we would have borrowed that money in the open market, it would be four million, seven hundred and eighty thousand, so a savings of nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. And when you take into account the present value, as well as the fees that are charged, the bottom right-hand column is the actual savings that going to the Texas Water Development Board got you and the citizens, six hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. So, the water board does give a few more hurdles that you have to make, but this page really shows that it's worthwhile. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, we'll.
Okay. Got a clear board, you're free. Thank you, Mr. McClainey.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. I think that's it on the consent agenda. Consent agenda again is Agenda Items four through eleven, and we added nineteen. So, we're in line for a motion. Councilmember Albig?
I'm moved to approve.
Councilmember Iverson?
That's for a second.
Motion second. Please signify your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, under the heading of public hearings, Agenda Item twelve and thirteen, Agenda Item twelve Z dash zero zero five dash ninety-nine, continued from the April twelfth, nineteen ninety-nine meeting, consideration interaction regarding the application of Ron Pressinger on behalf of Robert Halton for the zoning change request on Lot One, Block Three, Diamond Oaks Country Club Edition, Tracks One E-six, and a portion of Track One B, South Sayer Survey A dash fourteen twenty-five, Tarrant Appraisal District Maps, containing a total of point five-two acres of land located on the southeast corner of Denton Highway and Diamond Oaks Drive North from the SF-two Single Family Residence District to the C-one Commercial District. Mr. Austin, I'll give you an opportunity for some brief comment for the applicant. And this is a public hearing, I'll now open to public hearing.
As you indicated, this is a zoning case. The purpose of the rezoning is to change the zoning of this piece of property to allow for construction of an animal clinic. And the applicant is here this evening, and I would turn it over to him for comment at this point.
Okay. Mr. Pressinger, do you want to go first? Mr. Halton, who, the chair?
I'm going to have to apologize for my voice. If you all bear with me, I had throat surgery two days ago, so I may kind of break up. My name is Robert Halton, and I appreciate the opportunity to come for the council with this request for rezoning. I've lived in Halton City about forty years, and I've always considered a, a very fine place to live, or I wouldn't be here. We've always had a lot of pride in Halton City. We've taken pride in the things we've accomplished, and the city's accomplished, working together, the community. And, you know, we, as a trustee of the GW Halton Trust, I, I have a philosophy of, of trying to, to bring about worthwhile businesses or institutions or whatever that will improve our city, the quality of life in our city. You may not, to give you a little background about what we've done, the family has done in the past, is we were, I think, I believe instrumental in, in bringing the development of the Diamond Oaks Country Club to Halton City. I know when we borrowed the money to put in the streets, and I had to personally guarantee the loan, and I didn't have that kind of money, the bankers in Fort Worth laughed at me when we said we were going to develop a country club in Halton City because of the, of the type of houses and residential that we had. But anyway, we went ahead and did it. And by actually giving the land to the country club for the clubhouse and giving the, my family gave the two hundred acres for the golf course. And this made it possible for the, raising the money to build the golf course. And otherwise, I would, I don't think they could have ever done it. But anyway, that's, that's hindsight. I have contracted with one of our local businesses for the sale of this property that we're speaking about tonight, and to Dr. Ron Pressinger is owner of the Diamond Oaks Veterinary Clinic. And how many years in Halton City? Okay, quite a long time. Anyway, he, he came to me and wanted to know if that property would be available to build a new clinic. He's a presently leasing property in a strip center just north, a couple of blocks. And I said, I don't know, Dr. Pressinger, we'll see what we can do. And so, that's why we brought this to the, the city, to see if we couldn't get the zoning changed to allow us to utilize the property which is fronts on the Denton Highway. It's actually a hundred feet on the Denton Highway, a little over a hundred feet, and a hundred and forty feet along Diamond Oaks Drive North. I'd like to take you on a quick tour. I may need to dim the lights here. Okay. This is not a very good photography, but I think you might be able to see, these are properties, this is our Denton Highway as we now have it. I took slides of, of properties up and down the Denton Highway. And these are properties, they used to be houses, residences. And they were, there were residences were built along the highway. But these residences, because they are on a very highly traveled highway, they change. So, I want to show you some of these properties that we now drive by every day, and they were originally homes. They've turned into, and I'm not trying to be sarcastic, but this is what a residence will turn into if, if, if indeed one is built on adjacent to highway properties. That's the Palm Reader. I hope they're not here.
She knew about the meeting.
This is down on Halton Road. I mean, you know, this is originally a residence, and now it's a, it's a tire and wheel business. It's a house across the street, another house on, oh, that's on Halton Road. I'm not being derogative about that. Okay, this is, this was originally a, a home that was torn down, and they built a service station, and now it's a, a tire company. This is on the Denton Highway. This is right up by the Eckard Drug Bank entrance, and this is property that is for sale, and I understand it's commercial. This is a nice, pretty well-kept house, but it's adjacent to a shopping center right beside it. But now, this house is actually a business. You can't see the lettering, but it actually is a, a professional, turned into a professional business office. And that one's up by the bank, the New Bank, Texas Bank. That's a residential, a home that's been turned into a business. That's, that's another home that was turned into a business. We're just looking at the Denton Highway and what, what has happened to residences, lots that were residential and what they are now. That's a residential house. I don't know whether it's vacant or not, but that's what we have. I don't know what that is. But that's right up the Denton Highway. That is a, across this highway on the east side. And this is Mr. Callaway's home, and I understand he still lives there, but he's, he, he lives right next to a, a fast food, what is that?
Sonic.
Sonic, Sonic. In other words, he adjoins Sonic on the, on the north. Bless his heart. Right next door to him. This, this is what we have on the Denton Highway right now. And I, you know, I, I just feel that, now that is a home that's had been turned into a photography, and did a nice job with it. Point I'm trying to make is sooner or later, if you build a house on the, on a major highway, it's, it's going to eventually turn into commercial. And there's no, there's very little way you can prevent it, because we have people selling things out of the yard all over Halton City. I mean, I have them in, not my neighborhood. I have commercial businesses going on right across our next-door neighbor in my, in where I live. Dog houses for sale. Used to be a residence. Okay. All right, I'm not through yet. I'm, I'll be through in a second. This is Dr. Pressinger's present veterinarian clinic, and he's renting this property. And what he wants to do is, I understand it, and he'll talk, show you a little bit, he wants to build a brand-new veterinarian clinic on this property, on the highway. This is the property we're talking about right there. A lot of trees and growth, and I've had the property some thirty years, been paying taxes on it, mowing it. But sooner or later, you know, I'm at the point where I'm going to do something with the property. It's not going to stay like it is. I'm, you know, if I can't get it rezoned, but, but, but I think that, that what we have here is a, is a nice-looking building that's going to improve our neighborhood rather than be a detriment to it. This is what's across the street from this property, and that's our, the church on the Stanley Keller, and then part of the antique mall. And then right across the street, we have a used car lot. So, would you, would anyone in this room build a house right across from this used car lot? I don't think so. In ten years, I've only had one person, and I've had a sale, the property's for sale for ten years, there's only been one person that has had any interest in building a house on that property, and that person was unable to get financing. The mortgage companies will not lend, make a loan on a residential property because of the location, being right on a highly traveled, somebody told me thirty thousand cars a day come by, come down that highway. That's another view of the shopping center across the highway from it. This is what's across from my house, and this is residential, and a, and a family moved in there, and they started painting it, the house, about a year ago, and they painted part of it and walked away from it. So, I mean, some of our biggest problems are the care of residential. Those, this center was built on what used to be residential lots, and somehow it was zoned, and it's right in between houses. This is a parking lot on Halton Road. It used to be residential, but it's, now it's turned into a parking lot that adjoins the shopping center. That's the New Bank Drive-Thru, Texas Bank, and it backs up to homes on the back, back of that property. Oscar Restaurant is adjacent to a home on the east, and on the other side as well. It's, it used to be a residence. It turned into a restaurant, and we're proud of it. He did a beautiful job, and he's, and he's a good citizen of our city. This is a childcare center that is right back behind Dr. Pressinger's clinic, and you'll notice it's right back against homes in, on the east, adjacent to it, childcare center. This is an attorney's office, I think, and it's on Glenview, but that used to be residential. Now, you know, I'm proud of some things that have happened to our city. I'm proud of this, this improvement. This is a nice addition. It used to be a grocery store, but they've turned it into a nice business, and we should be proud of it. More of the center. I'm proud of Oscar. I think he did a very good job with converting it to a restaurant, and he keeps it in a nice order. What happens to these businesses that are, are not financed is, I mean, the houses that turn into businesses, they don't have the money to keep them to landscape and keep them clean and, and repaired, and so they just turn into a, an unsightly piece of property. That's a nice addition to our city. City staff has done a great job in, in bringing some nice, new businesses to the city. This is one of mine from the trust. We, we were proud of McDonald's. We, we worked real hard to get these leases. That's the Taco Bell. And that's the Whataburger Restaurant, which I was able to turn into a family restaurant. I understand they have very good food. And he remodeled it, and he's doing well. Market Place, of course. Very nice. That's my little, what used to be Kentucky Fried, and it turned into a Greek drive-thru restaurant, and I understand he has very good food. This is the new Masonic Building up on Broadway, and, and we're proud of that, too. This is a dentist office that's right on the Denton Highway. It's been there quite a while, and it shows you what, you know, if you build, you start from scratch. start from scratch, he built this from scratch, and it didn't convert a home, so he has a nice office building. Okay, now, these are some veterinarian clinics that are, that are built, and this one happens to be in Colleyville, and it's on a major boulevard, and I believe it's, uh, I believe it's, uh, what is that, 121?
Highway 26.
Okay. But you see what a nice job they did with that. This, this one's being built in, uh, you, uh, in Keller, I believe, under construction, hasn't opened yet. There's a nice one out in South Lake, and it's, it's not too far back behind it. You can't see them behind those trees or, or homes, very nice homes. Another one out in, uh, Oatoga, I believe, being built. This is Colleyville again, uh, the main highway, 121 to Colleyville, and you'll see the nice homes in the background, uh, not, not too far away. And these are $350,000 homes that are going up out there. You all are well aware of the, of the quality of the homes that, that they're able to build in South Lake and Colleyville. Nice, clean neighborhood.
That's it.
Yeah. The end. Come on, Robert, listen up. I think I'm done. Uh, I'd like to introduce Dr. Ron Pressinger and let him explain a little bit about what his plans are.
My name's Ron Pressinger. I'm currently in business-
Hold on. Get the mic back so people on cable TV can hear you.
Yeah. My name's Ron Pressinger, and I'm currently in business at Diamond Oaks Veterinary Clinic on Denton Highway. I am in a leased facility there, and we've just outgrown the space we're in. Uh, the reason I'm looking to relocate is because we've outgrown it. This piece of property, uh, that we're talking about rezoning is, number one, it's in a great location for my clients. Uh, it's right in the center of, of the clientele base where I want to be, and, plus, I can afford, you know, to buy it. I wouldn't have to raise my prices. Uh, it would be affordable for me, and, uh-
Dr. Pressinger, if you'd lean a little forward into the mic when you speak, we're, I don't think it's picking up on cable.
Can we turn the-
This is a drawing-
Ken? Hang on just a second. Ken, is there a way to get that mic a little more gain on it, you think?
All I can hear is-
Bring it up. Slap a jecter to help if you turn it off.
Okay, I'm sorry.
This is a drawing that my architect grew up, uh, to have for the meeting we had last Wednesday, and this is what my new clinic is going to look like. And, uh, hopefully it'll be on that, that location. But you can see it's a very upscale, modern building. Uh, it shouldn't be any problems to any of the, the residential area around there.
Why don't you show that to the audience and the camera?
Yeah, let the camera see that. Now, wouldn't that be nice?
The parking is on the front, facing the Denton Highway, right?
This is a topographical view, and we've got the, the entrance and exit on Denton Highway, so it wouldn't conflict with any traffic on the Diamond Oaks Boulevard there.
Then we need to see that.
Yeah. Can we see it?
Yeah. But that, uh, all the entrance and exits are right here on Denton Highway.
So this is going to be one, one entrance in and out, one way in?
One entrance in and out. And that's the way, uh, the clinic works right now, entrance, entrance and exit on the Denton Highway. And about the same distance from a red light is what this would be here, so we, the traffic wouldn't be a problem. And I've got signed letters here from people who are in, in business around me right now. One is a daycare center who is 40 foot from my back door where my dog kennel is, stating that there, there's no odor, there's no do, uh, ticks or fleas, and no noise problem. So if you want to see those, I'll be glad to show them to you.
Yes.
No, I don't need to see them. I think there's one place that shouldn't have ticks or fleas, you've got all this stuff there to kill them.
Do you have a question?
And, uh, it has been brought up that we would put a, a privacy fence between the back of the clinic and the property, I think it's Mr. Thompson's property, right next door there. But, uh, you know, there really shouldn't be any problem with, with odor or fleas or noise, because, uh, there hasn't been. One of these businesses is 10 foot from my dog kennel, and there's no problem, so.
Okay. Uh, have you spoke to the highway department about the, the access on the Denton Highway? Is that, I know a lot, in previous cases, there, the highway department, uh, has to approve that, and I didn't know-
They, they said we would have to, have to have that approved, so, uh, we don't have that yet.
Okay, but you, but you don't, that they didn't indicate that was a problem?
They said that you may have any problem.
Okay, thank you. We'll take a few seconds, we're going to look through this, these letters.
I really am proud to have a, a quality veterinarian in our city. I understand Dr. Ron Pressinger does some volunteer work for the city in the animal, uh, control, is that right? I'm going to brag on him a little bit. He does, he does some volunteer work for the city, for all of us. And if you haven't noticed, Riston Hills is building an animal control, their animal control clinic, brand-new one, just started it on the Becker Boulevard, on the main boulevard. So they are, they're pretty proud to have the animal control, which I would think would be a lot more offensive than having, you know, just a clinic, uh, where we treat our little animals. I don't think he does big animals, do you? So there won't be any horses or donkeys or cows or things like that around. Anyway, I, I see it as an opportunity to have an addition, a, a new building, a quality building, a construction in, in Holton City. And believe you me, it's difficult to get somebody to come in and build in the older, anything south of the loop in Holton City today. But, uh, I, I, I hope that we can take advantage of this opportunity.
Thank you. Customer Quinones, do you have a question?
Uh, yes, I had a couple of questions for Dr. Pressinger, if you could, and then I'll have some for Karen. Uh, you said you've been at that location you're at now for how many years?
I've been there almost five years. The clinic itself has been there 28 years.
Okay. During the time that you were there, have you had any, any customer or anybody come in, a resident, anybody, come in there and complain about the noise or fleas or ticks or anything like that?
Not one, and we do a grooming business there also, and people are very finicky about their pets, and if they're going to pick up a flea or a tick in a animal establishment, then they're going to let you know about it, but there hasn't been any problems.
All right, and it, the, uh, the site plan or design that you have, uh, as far as the noise, because that's a legitimate concern, I would assume, and it is, uh, what, what assurances can you give the citizens about, about that, about the noise?
Well, I know, uh, one of these letters, uh, my kennel is in the back of the building, and there's just a tile wall between that wall and the pawn shop and the, the daycare. And there's no noise out there right now, so there shouldn't be any, any noise. I mean, we're not going to have a kennel. We're going to have sick animals in there that, you know, we're keeping, but, uh, it's not going to be a kennel like, uh, your best friend or dog's best friend or anything like that.
Okay, is this, I must, I guess what you're going to be doing is you're going to have, will there be additional protections for sound? I mean, the design is obviously going to be a newer design, is there, is there something in for that?
Yeah, that's, that's one problem I have now, is when we do have, you know, some, some barking pets there, and we do have some from time to time, that the walls are not insulated well, and you can hear it throughout the front of the clinic. Uh, if you, the farther you go, the, the less it gets, but, you know, when we're there all day, the me and the girls that work for me, you know, we can tell it, but, uh, we, we totally tend to eliminate that problem in the new clinic.
And what do you propose to do about, not just the noise, but say fleas and, and groundskeeping as far as preventing anything from happening? Do you have any plan in mind or anything that you're going to do?
We've got a contract with an exterminator right now that comes in every three months and, and sprays the backyard and the kennel itself, plus the building itself, so we'll probably keep the same contract with him, but we never, never had any problems with him.
If you were to build this, what type of frame you're looking at, what timetable, and if, if this was to be approved, would-
I would hope to have it finished by the end of this year.
The calendar year? Okay. Uh, I did have a couple of questions for Karen, if she could.
Karen?
Karen, I'd ask you this, and I, you mentioned to me, and as far as all the other pet clinics or whatever we have in the city, and have we had any complaints about noise or fleas, ticks, or things like that from any either of the residents or businesses that are right around them?
Right, I checked with Chuck Kendrick, who is over animal control, who would normally get those type of calls, and to his, uh, knowledge, as long as he's been with the city for 15 years, there's, has never been a complaint on, uh, on that.
Uh, as far as the city's concerned, I mean, have we had any problem that you're aware of? I know Chuck handles that, whoever, but have you, has anyone indicated that we've had any running problems with any of these clinics?
No, sir.
Okay. Um, the zoning on this property now is currently what, residential?
SF2, yes, sir.
Now, Mr. Holton had mentioned someone had tried to buy residential. Are there, are you aware of any problems connected with anyone trying to, to build a residence on that property?
Um, since I've been with the city going on two years now, um, I, I did not personally work with anybody on this piece of property for residential, but by the same token, um, I've never even spoken with anybody about this piece of property at all until this case came up.
Is it, uh, still the staff's recommendation to grant the zoning change request?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I have no more questions now at this point.
Thank you. Customer Art?
I guess, uh, my question would be is I see that it's going to be a .52 acre lot. I was wondering what is the dimension of the lot going to be? So I didn't see that.
It should have been in your backup information. There's an attachment that looks like this right here.
Okay, I see it now.
And that will show you the dimensions. They, they most definitely, if they got the zoning on this property, they would have to come through, uh, the replating process in order to add a little sliver. Um, I believe it's just a very small piece of property that's right there at Denton Highway. It would be all of Lot 1, and then a very small portion of a, a tract that's adjacent to the state right-of-way.
Okay, I see that now. And the immediate properly, property that's abutting this to the south is Zone C1, is that correct?
Um, let me look real quick and see.
Okay. All right.
Well, let me, right, I, I'm sorry, it's not just that little sliver, there's also a, a little piece of property that's just to the south of there between the C1 property, um, and Lot 1, the platted Lot 1, I'm sorry, missed that, that other piece. But yes, property to the south is C1.
Okay. I guess, um, my comment on this is that, uh, this property's been vacant for almost 50 years, and also, I haven't seen any new houses being built on the Denton Highway. So I see no other use for this property other than this veterinary clinic. That's my opinion.
Right, and, and I'm going to caution the council, this is a public hearing, we probably shouldn't state our, anyone's opinion up here till we've heard, we've got at least seven people wishing to speak publicly, some are opposing.
That's what I was going to say. And that's what I was about to say. And that's, that is right now what my opinion is, and that's why I'd like to hear from the property owners.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Watkins?
Are you interested in a personal experience?
With fleas?
About fleas, or? Is this vet clinic, or are we going to a new direction here?
Vet clinic. Uh, before, before I moved to my present location, I rented the office right next door in the same building to this veterinary clinic. I was there for six years. We shared a common wall. Never had a flea, never had a tick, never heard noise, zero. I was in that building for six years. So that, I just thought I'd share that with you.
Okay, thank you. Customer, Councilman Quinones, do you all have quick questions? I mean, we're, we've got several citizens that wish to speak.
I did, but they can wait.
Okay. Customer Williams, did you have-
I was going to ask, uh, two quick questions. One is for Mr. Holton, Mr. Pressinger. The, uh, where you're going to build the-
Rock here, I don't hear very well.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Holton.
That's okay.
Where the, uh, where the clinic is going to be built, uh, the gentleman that owns the home right behind there, how far is the fence going to be from his, the side of his house? Do you know how far the-
All right, is it Mr. Thompson?
It's going to be, the, the back wall will be 10 foot from the fence row, so, uh, there's a 10-foot easement there, and, uh, that would be 10 foot, but the kennel will be about 50 foot away, but it's going to be closer to the front of the building.
This is a three-part question, I guess, and this is for Karen. When they, uh, if they get the permit to do this, get the zoning and, and get everything approved, the fence, the barrier fence between the homeowners and between the vet clinic, is that going to be like on a brick wall, or is that going to be flat on the ground, or, or how's that going to work? And is there going to be a driveway in behind the, is there going to be a barrier distance between the?
Well, we haven't really gotten into the site design. We haven't had an opportunity to sit down with Dr. Pressinger and look at what his proposed site design is. Of course, that would come with, um, the building permitting phase, as we would do an administrative site plan review on this piece of property. The ordinance does require any non-residential use that abuts a residential is required to put a minimum six-foot-high screening device. The screening device can be masonry, it can be wood, it can be a combination of that with, with, uh, evergreen, uh, dense landscaping. In addition to the screening device, you're also required to put a 10-foot landscape buffer strip with one tree planted every 25 linear feet. However, in a case like this, during site plan review, staff, uh, very strongly recommends, um, putting in dense evergreen shrubberies such as a red-tipped photinia that grows very quickly, and, and is an evergreen and a very dense shrub, um, as a measure to try to mitigate any kind of noise, odor, any of those types of things. So in this case, that's what staff would be recommending.
Okay. A lot of times when I see a, a piece of commercial property built up adjacent to a residential, many times there's like a cement barrier wall, not a very high one, you know, but just so high, you know, a couple of foot or so, and then the fence is built on top of that. Uh, Mr. Pressinger, when you, there will be a drainage study, I'm sure.
Yes, that all comes during the plating process.
And that's sure that there won't be any drainage going off on the other property.
Correct.
Uh, Mr. Pressinger, you said you were going to have an exterminator contracted to come out?
I do at this time, and it would be no problem to continue that on the new-
Well, will they do, will you have them do the perimeter of the property, or just-
Yeah, inside and outside.
Inside and outside and all around?
We don't keep any dogs outside, but we do walk them outside, uh, on a leash, so they're, they're never left, you know, unattended outside, but they do, you know, walk outside.
So you would be willing to do the entire perimeter of the property to assure that no, is, is there a big problem with fleas? And I, I don't run a vet lab.
If you, if you don't treat for them and prepare for them, there is a problem, but if, if you stay ahead of them, it's not a problem.
I bring you my dog, and he has fleas. What do you do with him first?
Whatever you can afford.
No, I mean, can I come in and get a dog and get shots with fleas, or, or will you require that dog to be dipped, or?
Now, we, we don't require that of any animal. We, we certainly pointed out to the client, and we've got several products at different price ranges that will take care of the fleas on that problem, but the most, the big problem if the dog has fleas is the home residents. It's not really on the dog, because they don't stay on the dog that long. Three weeks is the life cycle, and then they, they fall off and die. Uh, the big problem is the eggs and the larvae that are in the, the grass outside and in the carpet in the house, so we, we advise people about all this.
Okay, thank you.
Customer Harrison, I'm going to ask you to hold your comments. I want to hear from some of the residents here. They've been waiting very patiently, and they, they may either answer some questions or, or what have you, and, uh, got like seven speakers' requests here. Uh, first one tonight's Mr. Mike Thompson, 5604 Diamond Oaks Drive North.
Mayor, council members, um, my family and I live at the house that adjoins this piece of property that the proposed zoning change deals with. Over the years, I've had customers and friends that have built a house next to a corner lot, or bought a house that backs up to a piece of property that's on a busy road, and then they complain and whine when somebody comes in and puts a 7-Eleven store. They didn't ask the questions. Before I bought this piece of property, I told my realtor, you know, he suggested that we look at property in Holton City, and I said, "I'm just not that hot on Holton City." And he said, "Holton City is not the place that it used to be, it's not the place that so many of us that grew up here moved to get away from." He said, "The property values are, are phenomenal in Diamond Oaks, Diamond Lock, Meadow Lakes." He said, "You get a lot of house for the money, it's a stable neighborhood," but he said, "I'll, I'll address the issue that you're speaking of as far as that corner lot." Well, he researched it, and he came back, and he said, "No, it's a single family." And based on that, we made the decision to buy the house. Now, I, my wife brought petitions, I think she had 99 signatures to the council today or to the city. The comment from probably 25 of those people that live on Diamond Oaks Drive, when I would approach them about signing the petition, is, "Yes, I'll sign it, and boy, you better hope they don't get it, because it's going to kill your property value." When Mr. Holton elegantly spoke about all of these nice animal clinics that are being built in Colleyville and Southlake, you didn't see any houses behind any of them except that one, and I can almost guarantee you the house that was built in Colleyville was built on a piece of property that was already zoned commercial. The one that he alluded to in Southlake, where he said, "You can't see it for the trees, but there are some big nice homes back through there," that's our veterinary, and there are no big nice homes. Otis Collins, who has an upholstery shop, and his house lives across that field, the big nice homes are a quarter of a mile away. I, I asked the questions, and I bought the property based on the fact that I was not going to end up with a business next to me. The property line is six feet from my bedroom window. Again, I would have never bought the property if I had ever thought, "Well, I'll wake up in the springtime, open the blinds and raise the window and be able to see a brick wall or the back of a business." And Nancy related a personal experience with fleas. I'd like to relate one of my own. I've built a shopping center on Watauga Road several years ago. One of my tenants, the one that was right next door to me, was a pet grooming shop. Now, they didn't board animals, they didn't treat sick animals, they just groomed the animals. We had tanning beds, and after we began to have numerous people come out of the tanning beds, and they weren't scratching, but they were unhappy, and they said, "You know, you got to do something about this." It turned into be a real war trying to keep the fleas down. We spent a great deal of money, and, and the tenant cooperated, but they were never able to get it under control. We always had fleas in the salon. When they speak of, and Mr. Holton brought this up at the last meeting, he said, "Nobody in their right mind would live on the Denton Highway." My mother-in-law lives on the corner of the Denton Highway, and one of my very best friends lives across the street on the other side of the Denton Highway. When he talks about nobody will build a house in that area, uh, there's a new house being built on Diamond Oaks Drive South. I talked to the wife of the developer today, and she said, "The house is for sale." And I said, "What's the asking price?" And she said, "We're asking $150." So it's a very nice house. And I said, "If you sell that, would you be interested in developing another one?" And she said, "Where?" And I told her about the lot, and she said, "Do you have any idea what he wants for it?" And I said, "No, I don't." And she said, "Yeah, we would be interested in taking a look at it." She said, "You know, we sell this one, you know, that's what we do." And Mr. Holton took us on a tour of the Denton Highway. I don't have the slides, but as far as a space to put a business, there's lease space from the Makens Company in the New Wind Dixie Shopping Center, minimum 1,200 square feet, maximum 9,000 square feet. In the old Wind Dixie Shopping Center, it's 2,400 square feet, $6 a square foot rent. I've got three businesses in Southlake, and I don't pay less than $22 a foot for any of them. $6 a foot is, is very affordable for exposure on a highway where you have a 30,000 a day automobile count. North Hills Village has 3,700 minimum, 6,000 maximum. Holton Plaza has two 2,400 square foot places, one of them is a doctor's office, and the realtor that I talked to said it would be ideal for a veterinary clinic because it's already set up in offices and would, would convert easily. Henry S. Miller has 10,000 square feet, I think, total in the Kroger Shopping Center. They've got some that's, that's open now and some that's going to be coming up. If you don't want to lease, there's an acre for sale, but down from the Sonic on the Denton Highway at 380, or 3408 Denton Highway, uh, there's retail property, or, or property for sale next to the New Wind Dixie. The corner of Glenview and the Denton Highway is for sale. Those same people have some property on Glenview. There's 5.9 acres for sale that I, I understand is Mr. Holton's between the cleaners and the convenience store. I called about that, asked the realtor, I said, "Will you subdivide it?" And he said, "Yeah, we'll subdivide it because the property is over 600 feet deep, so we have 500 feet on the highway, and, you know, we would work something out." And there's another piece of commercial property for sale on the Denton Highway, and that's the one that, that abuts the piece that they're proposing the zoning change on, and that's Mr. Holton's property. And when he speaks of trying to improve the looks of a place by putting a commercial building on a place to upgrade it, his property is already zoned commercial, and it would enhance it much more to bill something and upgrade it and clean it up than it would to put it next to my place. When he talked of Mr. Callaway a while ago at the Sonic on the Denton Highway, and he said, bless his heart, is that because he's next to a business or because he's next to the Sonic? But, you know, in this case, you know, it's like he proposes to do the same thing to me. We have, we had 99 people sign the petitions. There was a proposed neighborhood meeting last week. The lady that works for the city was out there in the hall telling us we should all come, and I said, "Well, all of the, all of the people that are within the 200-foot boundary are here, plus several of the other, the other neighbors." And I said, "Nobody's interested in coming because nobody wants it." And she said, "Well, just come and let's address the issues." And I said, "There's nothing that will change her mind, we just definitely don't want it." I would, I would hope that the city council will choose to, as one of the members of the Planning and Zoning Board, when they voted this down, made the statement, you know, he asked the doctor, "Have you bought the property?" And he said, "No." And he said, "You have a way out?" And he said, "Yes." And he said, "I think we should go with the homeowners and preserve the character of the neighborhood, because you're not committed to it, and it is zoned residential." Somebody made the, the comment a while ago that staff had voted or had.
Recommended.
To, recommended to approve it. You know, Planning and Zoning said they didn't think it was a good idea based on hearing the neighbors and the opposition to it. There's nobody that I talk to in Diamond Oaks that wants it there. There's just absolutely nobody. I, uh, I can't imagine how this could happen, and it's not like there's not a place for Dr. Pressinger to relocate his business if he's out throwing that. There's space for the lease, and there's also property for sale. In closing, I would respectfully ask that the council vote against this.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Ombi, Councilor Ombi, do you have a question? Thank you. Councilor Quinones, do you have a?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Thompson, a couple of questions.
I'll give you an opportunity after everybody spoke, Mr. Holton. Thank you.
You said, "When did you buy the property that, that's right behind the one question, when did you buy that house?"
When did we buy it? Two and a half years ago.
Okay. I look, I was noticing in the, um, information they gave us, they made a mention about deed restrictions. I haven't seen the language, I haven't seen it, but do you know what the deed restriction is? Is it in here?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We looked at the deed restrictions, and apparently they expired after a period of time, 1984, 86, something like that. But originally, and I suppose that Mr. Holton was one of the people instrumental in putting these deed restrictions together, and I don't, I don't have it in front of me, but it said, you know, basically, this property may never be converted to commercial property or for any other use, it will remain residential.
And was there a time period? I didn't have a chance to.
Yeah, it, it has expired.
You remember when that was?
I think it was 84 or 86, something like that.
Uh, is there, is there any, any use of that property that you, in the commercial area, that you would find acceptable?
It's zoned, single-family, and when I bought the property, I based the sale on the fact that I felt like I was protected because of the zoning. You know, and I was told that the property next to it is zoned commercial. I was told that somebody may bill something there, but that this was zoned residential. You know, I, I don't want to fight this battle every time it comes up if the council chooses to go against it, but, um, you know, I, I don't want anything there other than a house. Now, I was told that because the, the deed restrictions have expired, and I don't know what the minimum square footage was in Diamond Oaks, but that it would now revert to Holton City's deed restrictions, which has a minimum of 1,200 square feet with, you know, a half brick or 60% brick or something like that, you know, and the question was asked to me, would I prefer that to a business? And my answer is yes, because it's still a house. You're still going to have neighbors instead of noise. You can, you can put a wall up, but I have a dog that goes out in the backyard, and if he hears other animals, then, you know, he's going to get excited. You know, how do you go out in your backyard and cook out, and people say, "Boy, what's all that noise?" And I don't care what anybody says, you take dogs out, they bark. My dog barks. You know, you take them to a vet, they take them out on, on a leash, and, and they just do, there's noise. I, myself, the 99 people that signed the petition, and I personally feel like most of the other people are against changing the zoning on it. And I, I know that Dr. Pressinger is a good veterinarian, I know he's a good citizen, but I also know that there are many, many places that he can locate his business without knocking my property value down considerably and having to change the zoning. And as I said before, the property right next to it, and this is something nobody seems to be willing to address, but the property next to it that would put his place by Mr. Holton's house instead of mine is already zoned commercial. And, and I don't want to make any enemies out of this, I hate stuff like this, you know, and, and, and Mr. Holton is a good neighbor. We've, we've talked several times out in the yard, I've, I've called him before when this for sale sign was, was knocked over by my yard guys, went out there and picked it up, and, you know, I, it, it's not a personal thing, it's just that I don't want a business next to my residence.
Is your concern having anything to do with, with, you know, fleas or sick, you know, ticks or things like that? Is that part of your concern? Do you think that, I guess the question is, what you've heard from the doctor, do you think he could satisfy that?
Yeah, that would be a part of it, but he says it's not a problem, Nancy says it wasn't a problem with her. My personal experience is that it was a problem when I had a pet grooming place next to a hair salon. But the big thing is, you know, and, and you can talk to anybody in real estate, and they'll tell you, you're going to take a hit on your property value. I didn't come out and buy the place and move in and spend $16,000 remodeling it to end up having it depreciate in value.
Thanks. Uh, Councilor Watkins, do you have a question?
Uh, I just wanted to, Mr. Thompson?
Yep.
Um, I believe I'm right in this. Around 1996, we developed a comprehensive land use plan, and at that time, that property was marked as commercial.
So why are we, why are we having a meeting to change the zoning if it's already marked commercial? It might be marked commercial, but it's not zoned commercial?
Yes.
You have a comprehensive land use plan, like, like you all may have asked, why did staff recommend approval of this? All staff's recommendations have to be based on a comprehensive plan, which was adopted by the city council. And so we look at what the future land use designation is. So when somebody comes in and requests that property to be rezoned, we check the comprehensive plan, if it's designated as commercial, they're asking commercial, then we recommend approval of that. It's a future land use plan adopted by the city. So you have zoning, but you also have a comprehensive plan to look at.
So zoning is not really zoning?
No, zoning is zoning.
That's, that's basically, you know, when we went through the process, we basically designated certain corridors as commercial corridor, and this, this road would be, you know, it by no means ties our hands to this decision. But, but it is a general direction that, that we follow.
I guess I go back.
And we, we don't get down, in the comprehensive land use plan, we did not get down to, to lot-specific, you know, especially lots that small. We, we look more at corridors, and, and it's kind of a broad-brush approach, but it, but it by no means says it's going to be, and no matter what, um, it's going to happen.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, and the only reason I brought that up was because you had said something about your realtor checking into it, and, um, I felt like maybe he overlooked that.
Well, I've, I've got the, the thing here, I guess, that was sent out from the city before the planning and zoning meeting, and it shows the property as being single-family.
It is, it is.
Yes, sir, it is.
Yeah, so you can see how my realtor could have overlooked it. But I go back to the same thing. Nobody in Diamond Oaks, with the exception of Mr. Holton, wants that to happen, and there is a piece of property that's already zoned commercial, it just happens to back up to his house instead of my house.
Okay. Okay. Councilor Watkins?
I have a comprehensive land question. What was, has this always been, uh, our zoned commercial in terms of comprehensive? Was it single-family before the comprehensive land program, or?
I don't know what the comprehensive land use plan was in the city prior to the one that was approved in 1996. I don't, I don't want to let there be confusion. Zoning is completely different than the comprehensive plan. State law says all zoning must be in compliance with the comprehensive plan. And of course, the comprehensive plan is just a guide that, that you all and staff and P&amp;Z look at to direct you on how the city's future.
Sure.
Growth is going to be, and that's why when Ms. Watkins asks, and a lot of times real estate agents, um, when they come in or they call and ask, "What's the zoning on this piece of property?", a lot of times they don't know that there's also a comprehensive plan, they need to look at what is planned for in the future, and that may have been what happened in this case, I don't know.
Well, tossing out the zoning, ask yourself the question, is there anybody on this council that would like for the doctor to build a clinic next to your house, with or without a privacy wall?
Yep. I think that's a question that'll be answered in a few minutes. We're going to, um, a couple, we've been sitting out here for nearly two hours, we're going to take about a five, 10-minute bathroom break, I apologize for being that indelicate, but a couple council members have indicated that, so we're going to take about a 10-minute break, I apologize for the delay. Okay, well, we convene back in regular session now.
Thanks for the break, Mayor.
Yeah. Well timed and well deserved. Uh, thank you, Mr. Thompson, for your, your eloquent comments. Uh, I know how sometimes these issues can, can sometimes get personal and erupt into emotions, and I appreciate, uh, the way you handled that. Obviously, we're not, we can't give everybody the same 20 minutes, uh, so I, all I'll ask is that the rest of the speakers, if you have got a different point to make than his, make it, but if you more or less agree with him, just kind of say, "Hey, I don't like it," or what have you, so we can kind of move through this. Don't want to cut anybody off, but, uh, I also don't want to, um, double over some ground that we've already covered, and, uh, I'm going to give the applicant an opportunity to say his piece or rebut when everybody has spoken, and then at that point, we, because we kind of need to bring this to a, to a conclusion. Next speaker, Margot Hoyt, Hoyt, uh, 56, Hoyt, 5608 Diamond Oaks. Apologize for butchering your name, it's an easy one.
Mayor and council people, appreciate you listening to our concerns. I'm just going to say a few things that Mr. Thompson has said, and then maybe some of mine will be different. The neighborhood and my family are against the zoning change for the following reasons. Like Mr. Thompson said, there's a number of adequate properties right now for lease or sale. Changing the zoning would destroy the character of our neighborhood that we're trying to preserve, to get people in, into the, our area. Having commercial property next door would cause our property value to decrease, making our homes harder to sell. The increase in traffic would cause more of a congestion than what, what it is right now. I mean, it takes several minutes just to go from Diamond Oaks North, just to get across Denton Highway because of the traffic. And also, I'm afraid the traffic might cause concern for the kids that, you know, ride their bikes and their rollerblades. Uh, I know everyone that's spoken up here has mentioned the fleas, the noise and the smell, but that's my concern. I mean, I don't want to go out in the backyard and smell the remains of dogs two doors down. I mean, it's just, it's just not something I want to do. The drainage problem, I know we talked about this last time we were here. My backyard is also in back of Mr. Holton's yard. front yard's okay, but my backyard is still real soggy. And that's a concern of mine as well, if you put more concrete for the building in the parking lot. I know, like Mr. Thompson asked, I mean, I would like to ask all of you as well, put yourselves in our place. Would you want a vet clinic, hospital for sick animals to be six feet from your bedroom window? Especially with you having young kids and pets of your own. I know the planning and zoning person had mentioned plants and shrubs to cover up the noise and smell. Well, they've been saying all night, there's not going to be any noise and smell. So, I mean, obviously there is, she must be aware of it, because, I mean, they addressed the fact, to prevent the noise and smell, yes, we will suggest plants. I was under the impression when we were here, I guess about four or five weeks ago with planning and zoning, that they voted in our favor to vote against the change, and since planning and zoning rejected the motion for the change, I hope y'all go along with their recommendation.
Okay. Just a brief review as well as everyone, what that, the negative recommendation from the P&amp;Z, what that does to this body means that to override that, we have to have what would be called a super majority, which would be six votes to overturn their decision, and that's what makes this different, okay? It just doesn't need a simple majority, it needs a super majority. Just one, you know, for those of you in the audience, that's what, when the P&amp;Z made negative recommendation, that's the change that it made upon this body.
Okay. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next speaker, Hilda Franklin, 5813 Diamond Oaks South.
I am Hilda Franklin at 5813 Diamond Oaks South. We have been living here 34 years, have raised our family here, and I just say detto to what Mr. Thompson and Mrs. Hoyt has said, that I am against the change.
Thank you very much. I have a little trouble reading this. 5717 Silver Lake, Mark McClure, McLean?
McCune.
McCune. I apologize. Tonight's not my night for names.
It's okay. It gets mixed up quite often. My name's Mark McCune. I was the selling real estate broker on the project. I did do most of my research. I did not know that there was a program set up for future reference. I did go through the residential zoning. The way I look at the piece of property, there is about four houses that back up to Mr. Halton that is zone commercial. If this piece of property does go commercial, then it looks like to me that the four, other three pieces of property behind that will go commercial, and eventually his will go commercial, which will all of a sudden become a whole commercial piece of property that goes into the Diamond Oaks area, which is one of the most popular and prestigious areas of Halton City. I live in 5717, I live around the corner from it now. I do drive in that way every day, going to my house. I've been there three years now, and I've probably seen probably six wrecks in that three years right there at that intersection. And I believe if we put another piece of property in that intersection going back towards the light, that we will have more problems going into and out of that area. I know it is a problem on mornings, Saturday, Sunday mornings, golfers and stuff coming into the country club, there is a lot more traffic coming down that road going into there. I look at the piece of property across the street, it has become a little bit more popular with the antique mall and stuff going in, and Dollar Center and stuff, but also see a lot of vacant area in there. The new Wind Dixie down the street, it has a lot of vacant piece of property going into it. Where he is now, he has the, I was raised on Norveille, which is right around the corner. He has the daycare center right behind him, right directly across the street from daycare center, has been a piece of property that's been vacant for, I'm 34 years old, it's been vacant 34 years. It looks like a very good piece of property to me. They have concrete wall going down it, or a brick wall going down it, brick wall to the back of it, that goes into the new residential area behind it. Looks like a good piece of property to me to put in a place. We have kids running around the area, we have ball teams and stuff playing across the street in the church parking lot, or in church, behind the church, do their practices and stuff there. We have a lot of traffic running through there, a lot of park cars running through there during ball season and stuff, that they do their stuff there. And what we're, my main complaint is, is if we do take that commercial, that all the residential area through there will start changing, and all the traffic and stuff through there will start changing, and then when I want my kids, and I let my kids run around the street, that it will change more and more until it eventually all becomes commercial in there, and at that point in time, we're going to have to start changing it commercial all the way back through. It is an older piece of property. Mr. Halton said he's had it 30 something years. He's tired of mowing it, he's tired of paying taxes on it, I agree with that. But also, there's other pieces of property around there, people are doing the same thing. He says that Halton City is an older piece of area that don't want to change, and it is finally changing. And my philosophy is, as long as we're inside 820, we're going to keep changing. People are going to understand that we're going to grow. I mean, there's no matter of fact about it. As long as 820, as soon as they start developing it, people are going to want to be inside 820, because they don't want to be north of 820. The traffic, the congestion, everything that is involved with it out there. I think that as long as we can keep this property residential, then eventually it will change residential, and then we can keep that area built up and prove that that area is built the way it's supposed to be. That is a country club area, it is not a commercial area. And that's the way that I moved into there, and that's the way I feel it ought to be, and it's the way it's been for 34 years. My family was a member of the country club. He showed pictures, my dad is president of Northwest Bank down there. He did go in and purchase a residential property and changed that into a commercial piece of property, but he also spent money to do that, and it takes money to do that. And I just think that what he's trying to do in there is a good philosophy, but it's not for this piece of property. I think there's other pieces of property up and down Denton Highway that could take that change and be very beneficial to him, and that's just what I believe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I heard it's Vera, I'm going to apologize if it's something else. Hampton, 5305 Bonnie Wayne. Vena, I'm not doing real well at all, my handwriting reading tonight.
Hello, I'm Vena Hampton, and I just want to say that I'm opposed to the rezoning of that area. I know I wouldn't want a business, you know, next door to my house, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, this name I'm going to get right, Joe Butcher, 5304 Bonnie Wayne. She and my mother were in PTA for years, so this one I knew.
I'm here to support the Thompsons. Yeah, last year. I'm here to support the Thompsons, and I agree with everything that's been said, that I would not want this next door to my house, and I know that they have a small, like a two-year-old daughter growing up there, and so I do object to it. And I'm also disappointed that Mr. Halton would take away that pretty spot that we have there on the Denton Highway. I've lived here 40 years, and I've enjoyed driving by your home and your yard, and especially those Lady Banks roses that your wife planted out there. So I would like to keep that natural spot in Halton City. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And our last speaker tonight, Ron Sturgeon, 1500 Carson.
My name is Ron Sturgeon, my address is 1500 Carson. I've owned businesses in Halton City since approximately 1974, and I'm currently active in the Business Association, serving on the zoning committee. I'm interested in seeing appropriate development throughout Halton City, and especially in the business corridors. I commend the applicant for choosing the site versus moving farther north or to another city, which is clearly his choice. The applicant already owns a compliant, community-friendly business in the area, and again, is to be commended for choosing a Halton City site to grow and improve his business. The applicant is currently operating in a smaller facility with restaurants as neighbors. They support and commend the cleanliness of his operation, which should easily speak to that issue for the neighbors. I can honestly say that I don't believe this development will reduce values and might create a buffer which could stabilize the value. I would also state that I have no objection, that I would have no objection to this neighbor where I'm living there. I drove the strip of Denton Highway in this area, it is clearly a retail commercial corridor, as the staff has commented, and is going to develop that way, and new construction would improve this area, not degrade it. Based on my real estate experience, I previously owned over 35 residential properties, I don't believe any lender will finance a new home construction on the site, and if they did, who would want a house that close to a commercial corridor? And I can speak specifically that FHA and VA written guidelines prohibit them insuring a mortgage on the site on the highway. I can't imagine that traffic would be a big issue with this type of business. When I take my poodle to the vet, there is rarely more than one or two cars in his parking lot. By the way, he's not my vet, so. I hope the staff or council will take whatever precautions are necessary if they can approve this to create an appropriate buffer to the residential area. I don't believe this will lower the property value, and in fact, it will provide a superior buffer to a high-traffic corridor, as opposed to an undeveloped piece of land. I wonder if residents' opposition could be a subterfuge for their real desire, which they seem to indicate, which is to see nothing built here. Attempting to force an adjacent landowner to not develop their property may be popular for a few adjacent landowners, but it doesn't serve the community at large, and is certainly not fair to the applicant, who is forced to pay taxes on property that can't be developed. The residents speak of the lot as if it is dreadful, so it is obvious that they don't really want even a home here. I am disappointed to hear that no residents attended the workshop to attempt to address the citizens' concerns. This would have afforded everyone an opportunity to resolve the issues, or to at least talk about them. From an applicant's point of view, having been there before, if an applicant failed to attend such a meeting, it would be completely unexcusable. The application is consistent with the area, it's consistent with the corridor, and it's consistent with all but perhaps a handful of individuals' desires. These items are noted by the staff. We don't need more undeveloped commercial, we don't need more undeveloped commercial land in a prime corridor, and we certainly don't need a new residence built on Denton Highway. This facility will serve the residents, and as proved already, be a compliant, tax-paying business. I hope the council will prove their resilience and objectivity and do what is right for the whole city by approving this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Halton, we're going to give you or Mr. Pressinger an opportunity for closing remarks.
Well, I don't want to get crosswired with my neighbor. I did remind him this evening, I offered him the property at a very, very reasonable price, if he wanted, and suggested to him that he buy it, to expand his property, his own home property, and that would permanently, give him a permanent buffer, if that's, you know, if that's his desire. Apparently, that's what it's been for many years, but, you know, the property's not going to stay like it is. You know, I'm 76 years old, and I've been mowing it and paying taxes on it for 35 years, and nobody will buy it. I've had signs on it, absolutely no one has indicated any interest to buy a residential lot on that property. And now, I guess some people calling, wanting to buy his house, it's already there, but there never, only one party has ever, in 10, 15 years it's been on the market, has wanted to buy it. Now, as far as the other commercial properties, the property that I own south of there, which is only 50 feet from this property, and if it were, if Dr. Pressinger were to buy it, has been suggested tonight, he'd still be within 50 feet of all these people, and so as far as flea problems, noise problems, 50 feet's not going to make very much difference. But the reason he doesn't want that is it's not a corner property, and it has some drainage problems that are created, bless your hearts, by the city, because they have major storm drains draining into that tributary that runs into the little pond, and, you know, that'll not be addressed until some kind of arrangement is made to accommodate all that water that's coming from north, storm drains, north and west of the Denton Highway. But that's a major problem, and I hate to see it. I used to keep that area clean and mowed and neat, but it got to the point where there's so much water coming through there, that, and it washed out my little wooden bridge, so then I had to spend another $15,000 building a concrete bridge. But there's so much water comes through there and debris from the highway, that it's impossible to keep it like I used to. But the properties, the other properties that are available, I can assure you, I've priced properties too, up and down the Denton Highway, and the property, one of the properties up by Wind Dixie was quoted to me as $8.50 a square foot. And I don't know whether it'd come down on that or not, for that property adjoining the new Wind Dixie that's commercial on the highway. There's property off the highway, of course, that would be less priced, but any of the highway property is going to be anywhere from $5 a square foot on up. And I'm proposing, and I have a contract with Dr. Pressinger, subject to this zoning, that will close if it's zoned, and I'm selling in the property for a little over $2 a square foot to accommodate a good neighbor. And he doesn't want to go across the highway, or up the highway, or off the highway, and pay $4 or $5 a square foot. And I believe the broker will agree with me that the property up and down the Denton Highway is far more than $2.25 a square foot.
We know we've talked long enough when we blow the circuit breaker on the audio. Okay. We're not going to close this public hearing. I think we've heard from everybody affected, and everybody's kind of had a chance to have theirs out. I'm going to open it up to council for debate and/or motion. No, I'm sorry, I closed the public hearing on 12, we'll move to item 13, which is the corresponding ordinance number 0-1999-016-15. Consideration interaction regarding approval and ordinance amending the ordinance number 0-97-015-15. As amended, the comprehensive zoning ordinance of the City of Halton City, Texas, by changing the zoning classification of certain property known as being Lot 1, Block 3, Diamond Oaks Country Club Edition, and Track 1E6, and a portion of Track 1B Sayer Survey, A1425, Turner appraisal district maps, containing a total of .52 acres of land located the southeast corner of Denton Highway and Diamond Oaks Drive North from SF2 Single Family to C1 Commercial District, this will be on first reading. Councilman Rart?
Well, I guess I'm going to throw some things, turn this on. I guess I'm going to throw some things out for discussion, because this isn't an easy topic. For one consideration was, which is what I threw out earlier, is that this lot's been vacant for almost 50 years, and here we have a potential chance of losing the taxpayer from the city to another city if we don't grant the proposal. On the other hand, we've got a petition here from 99 residents that don't want us to grant this. And on the other hand, I haven't seen any new residences been built on the Denton Highway. So as you can see... So as you can see, we've got a pretty good quandary here going, because nobody's ever built a new home on Denton Highway. This guy, if we say no, may move to another city and we lose his tax base. If we say yes, y'all are going to be mad. So, we have a bit of a quandary. So...
That's where you get the big bucks, councilmember.
I know. I know. So that's, so there we are. So let's have some discussion.
Councilmember Williams?
Don's College coming out there again.
There you go.
I have...
He talking for a while?
Yeah.
Of course not.
Okay.
I have a few mixed emotions on this. I was looking down through the panel here, and I think I'm probably the only one that lives in Diamond Oaks on the panel. I don't know.
Except for...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Mr. Hindering lives in...
Put your glasses on so you can see you.
Mr. Hindering lives in Diamond Oaks as well. I assume that this is in the shopping centers where the, in the forty-six-hundred block of Denton Highway, between the, it's the one between the Chinese restaurant and the pawn shop? Is that the Ed Ohenas? Did I pronounce that right?
Hone.
I was looking through this petition. Last year, when I ran, one of the platforms I ran on was to be business-friendly and try to bring businesses to Halton City, or enhance the businesses that are already here. On the other hand, I want to bring unity to the city. And we've got a problem here where we're trying to bring a business in, and we're trying to unite the people that live in behind it. And the people that live in behind that take very good care of their homes. I'm down through that way quite often. I know I've got friends that live on Silver Lake, some over on Biscayne, some on Bonnie Wayne, so I'm in now that area quite often. But I noticed on your petition, I don't know who the author of the petition was or where it was passed around, but there's people in this petition as far back to the east as Cheryl Field, the forty-five-hundred block of Roxy, which is, I guess, going to be close to the Stanley Keller intersection down there. And my main concern is safety and health for the citizens that live in Halton City. I also want to see it enriched by businesses. We purchased some property behind the old Wind Dixie. Is that not right? Didn't we, a few months ago? For the purpose of a walking trail, sort of a mini park. And I'm proud of our new park down here on Halton Road. I know there's lots of people go down there walking and rotorblading, and a lot of them have animals with them. So the people on the other side here are going to have the same problem. When we put the park in, we're going to have people with dogs around that park. So I don't know if we're going to have to spray that park or what we're going to do. But I came to a meeting Wednesday night, and I didn't know all the details until this evening. Nancy Watkins and I, and Karen Mitchell, Mr. Halton, I remember his name, and Mr. Pressinger. Our times weren't all coordinated correctly, but we came and passed each other. And I was sort of disappointed that there wasn't anybody here, you know, to speak far against this. We met over at the library. We stayed there over an hour, waiting on, you know, folks to be there. And I drove back up through the neighborhood that afternoon and resurveyed the property and stuff. I wouldn't be too happy with the trees and the shrubs and the brush and stuff that's over there now. You know, I would rather have that cleared off. But, I can tell Mr. Thompson, if you clear that off, then you're going to have the noise off that highway on you. I live three houses off Glenview, and I get constant noise off Glenview. So I don't know if this business would put a barrier and actually protect their homes from the sound. And I'll throw that out to council and let them get their opinion on the petition here and see what their thoughts are.
Thank you. Councilmember Hindering?
Couple of questions. I have a concern too about the traffic situation. I live on the north side of Glenview, Starlight, Melinda area, and we have a problem there going into the, what is it, the Iron Horse West problem. We have some traffic problems there as well. And I see this possibly shaping up that way. Have you surveyed the entrance, which is going to be off Denton Highway, the traffic situation?
No, sir, I haven't. But one of the things that I was hoping to get out of the neighborhood meeting was if there was a possibility that if you went with the planned development district where the neighborhood would actually have an input into the site design, where the city council could mandate that ingress and egress took place off Denton Highway and not Diamond Oaks, where we would have some definite assurances, or the placement of the building, or the placement of the landscaping, things like that. I was hoping that that would be the outcome of it, to try to take care of some of the concerns. And if that were the case, then we would start getting into the transportation issue at that time. Based on straight zoning and based on the comprehensive land use plan, in looking at this as a straight zoning district, staff did not look into the transportation issues at that intersection.
Is it wrong for me to ask you, is there a concern? Have you not spent any time on it to find out if it's a concern or not at this point?
Well, in answer to your question, no, I have not, because, first of all, we didn't have the information, like on the size of the building, how many parking spaces are going to be required, how many trips are actually going to be generated from this type of land use. And so, we did not get into the specifics of that. Had we gone to planned development district, then we would have gotten into those specifics. Again, I'd like the council to know that staff recommended approval of this going into the Planning and Zoning Commission. To my knowledge, my department did not receive any phone calls from the neighborhood. Had we known that there was some neighborhood concern, then we would have recommended to hold off on going to P&amp;Z to try to get together a neighborhood meeting to see if we could take care of some of that. Unfortunately, it came out at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And so, we probably would have held off on even getting to the Planning and Zoning Commission had we been informed of there being some neighborhood concern.
Okay. Let me ask you a perfect lead into the next question. If it was a planned development, can we, through planned development, specify certain criteria in terms of sound, noise, construction materials, et cetera?
Yes, sir.
What, can you relate to us, I guess, regarding the P&amp;Z meeting in terms of maybe what the ultimate concern was that P&amp;Z had?
Well, I was not able to attend that meeting. Diane Williams, our planner, was able to go to that meeting, and I had hoped that you had a copy of the minutes in your packet. And from what I was told, and probably the folks that were there, or maybe even Greg Van Newenhuis, may be able to answer that. But I believe that the main concerns really were exactly what the neighborhood shared with you all tonight, and that is, they don't want a commercial establishment at that location.
Last question for you, Karen, is drainage. I know we have a drainage problem to the south of this property. Would drainage not be a problem at all?
Drainage is addressed in the plating. If you go with the straight zoning, then drainage is going to be addressed during the plating process. If you go with the planned development district prior to the plating, then drainage can be addressed during the planned development district.
Okay. I mean, is there existing water drainage problem? I mean, I know to the south, we have a swamp.
Yes.
And would this exacerbate that swamp condition we have there?
It would take care of it on that piece of property. I'm going to let Greg address that, seeing that it's really an engineering issue, and he'll kind of explain to you about the plating process, what needs to take place on that.
Just briefly, I mean, we've been at this...
I think it probably would have very little effect on it at all. The drainage basin is so large that gets to the swamp area, for lack of a better term, that changing this small property, the amount of it from pervious to impervious is really not going to put a dent into the situation.
Okay.
Would you tell these people who you are? Do you all know who you is? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm done with, that's all my questions for Karen or for Greg.
I did have some questions for the doctor, Dr. Pressinger. Is it correct? One is, I think you elaborated a little bit before, the type of animals that you're going to be housing or treating. You're not going to be boarding, and you don't have any large animals. But what's the real, I mean, give us an example of the nature of the animals you're going to have.
Probably seventy-five percent of my practice is dog and cat, average size, about twenty-five pounds. We don't do any horses, cattle, pigs, sheep, goats, anything like that. It's pretty much a small animal.
Will you be walking these dogs? I mean, will they be out of your facility?
Yeah, any animal that's left there during the day for surgery or whatever will be walked outside two or three times a day.
Okay. Is there, I'm sorry, on the side plan, I guess you've got enough area out there to walk them?
Yeah.
Okay. And the other question you answered in our break, as far as, the point was made about all the other properties available to you. And my question to you was, what about the property that's commercial, just due to south? And I think your comment was, it's prohibitive to develop.
It's in the middle of the swamp.
Yeah, okay. Did you do a due diligence in terms of some of the other properties along this corridor?
I've contacted about ten different properties up and down that area, and it runs anywhere from, well, this is the low, two dollars a square foot to eight dollars and fifty cents a square foot.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams?
One more question for the doctor when we sit down. Did you already sit down?
Yeah.
No, that's okay. Wait a minute. Okay. The dogs that you're taking out a couple, two or three times during the day for, you said for surgery, is this for the obvious reason, or is this for exercise?
It's for urination, defecation, and we do clean up the yard.
That will be cleaned up daily?
Daily.
Okay. And for the traffic, Gene brought the traffic up, is there a church just north of this property, a Lutheran church or something? On any given day, like one of your busiest days, how many cars are going to be coming in, out of your...
The busiest day we have, we might have twenty-four cars come in. That's the busiest day. The average day is about thirteen, fourteen cars.
Okay. In the length of time, they just, about two an hour? Who said that? They just basically bring in, set the bed off, and leave? Okay. That's, would this, do you think this business would generate any more traffic than what the church would on a Sunday or a Wednesday?
Pardon? Last quick question, kind of on the traffic note. Through planned development, would we have possibly envisioned access from the due north off of that little access road through there, or is that not an appropriate access? My concern, I have a real concern about the access off Denton Highway, and the speed limit is, what is it, forty, up and down Denton Highway? And having all these forty-five to that area, I should know, but all those accesses are a concern.
Again, it's very difficult for staff to give you an answer on that without really analyzing the site design of what it is that he's proposing. We most definitely take into account the type of use and the amount of traffic that that type of use generally generates. And we do that in conjunction with Tech Start when we look at drive approaches and the location and the separation from each one. So really, when we get into the site design where staffs haven't had an opportunity to analyze that, that's when a determination is made.
Okay. Let me ask you, is it the possibility that it could exist on the due north entry, not off of Denton Highway, but another exit, another entrance?
Sure, it's possible.
It's possible.
It's possible. But again, sometimes we even look at, and I don't know how close the church's point of ingress and egress is. You know, we even try to, for instance, if it's right abutting to this property or any property, we try to do a shared drive approach anywhere we can to try to reduce the amount of drive approaches coming off of a major thoroughfare.
Okay. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Mayor. Like we beat this horse to death. Councilman, I said last week I don't have a dog in this fight, and that's probably not the right statement. Councilmember Art?
I was wondering if we're in line for motion.
I think we are. I know I am.
Well, I have a real quandary on this one, but due to the fact that there's other commercial property available on Denton Highway, and as much as I'd like to see this corner developed, I'm going to move to disapprove this ordinance.
Okay. Councilmember Albee?
I'm probably going to go that same direction. I had a question. I know, Dr. Pressinger, please don't get up again. Just stay there. We, I want to tell you this, this is not a good situation for any of us. And I sit here and analyze this thing to death, letting everybody else go. And the only thing I can say is, we don't want you to leave the town, we don't want them to leave the town. So it really is the biggest quandary we've had in a while. I'll ask you point blank, are you going to seek another spot in Halton City? If you can find it, would you take it?
The next piece of property that I'm looking at is already zoned commercial, but it is in open space.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. That certainly answered my question.
Are you seconding, or were you going to pass?
I'm thinking about whether to second or pass here. I'm still going to second.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Williams?
I thought the comment I heard from the audience a while ago, I couldn't hear it real well, was I was for Mr. Halton. That comment is half right, if I heard that comment. Yes, I am for Halton, not Mr. Halton, but I'm for Halton City. And I'm for doing whatever we can to make Halton City a better place to live. I'm not here to make you nine or ten people, or these other ninety people, mad. I'm just weighing up what I think's best for Halton City. I'm not doing this against y'all. I live in Diamond Oaks, I own a business in Halton City, and, you know, my business backs up to three lawns behind me. And, you know, we have no, I've been there twenty years, and I've had no complaints from my tenants that are behind me. So I'm not doing anything to try to be detrimental to your property. I live in Diamond Oaks with y'all. I'm proud of Diamond Oaks, I'm proud of y'all's property, and I'm proud of my property. But I'm also proud of my city. And when I say that I'm for Halton, I am for Halton City. And I am for unanimeness. I think there's a way that the businesses can operate here. I think there's a way that the citizens can live here in a safe manner. And I do not want to split the businesses apart from the residents. So if that was the comment I heard, you know, I am for Halton, Halton City.
We're not going to take any floor comment. We'll, I think everything's said, needs to be said. Councilmember Iverson?
Yes, the only I have to say is, is, you know, there's a petition in front of us. A lot of them are not right next to what this is going on, but there's quite a few of them. And if we remember right, behind the old Wind Dixie, that part that we're fixing to one of these days develop, was also going to be a used store place. And there seems sure there was a great outcry of citizens around that piece of property that said they did not want that there. And I have the same feeling here. I feel sorry for the doctor, and I know the doctor's having to sit here and listen to this, and his wife, and I feel for him. And I can see that their building's going to be a really nice place, a facility. But also, I'm also listening to the citizens here, because they're saying they don't want it, and that's why I'm going to vote against it myself.
Thank you. Councilman McLownis?
[inaudible] Because this is not easy. It was, we've been out here eight-thirty, so, I mean, please reassure yourselves that we are weighing this. But I, a lot of the concerns that I feel would be concerns of the citizens for health and safety, and noise and all that. It seems to me that those are going to be adequately addressed by what the doctors presented. I have no interest, I don't know the doctor, except for what I've seen here tonight. And a lot of those concerns have been addressed. The reality is, the property hasn't been developed in a long time. There may be a real question whether people should understand or know or guess that maybe in the future, this property along the highway might be commercial. I don't know. That's part of what we go through when we go through our zoning plan, and that does change periodically. But I believe a lot of the questions have been answered. A lot of the concerns about the health and safety and noise have been addressed adequately. I'm not convinced that they're... I'm not convinced that there's, you know, based on what the doctors indicated, there's going to be a serious problem. And so I would be in favor of granting the zoning change as requested at this point.
All right, we had motion and second, and some additional comment.
Would you clarify that a yes vote means that you are opposed to the change in the zoning? Which means it'll stay single family. A yes vote means stay single family. A no vote means commercial.
Right, that would be good, Mayor, if you do.
Okay, for council, a yes vote means no vet clinic, because his motion was to deny. Okay? Everybody clear? Okay. Please signify your vote. Okay. Motion, yeah, I think I'm going to leave you lots on so we can record the vote.
Because it's needed a supermajority. It appears that we're not going to have that, so this would actually fail. Correct. Dr. Ron, I mean, I know, I'll state my opinion now that doesn't matter, I wasn't going to get to vote anyway. Dr. Ron's my vet, fine man. You know, I agree with the residents, though. You know, if I'd have bought a piece of property, I wouldn't want the property next to me changing to commercial. But Dr. Ron, I would ask you, if you would, tomorrow, will Scott Wellmaker, Economic Development Director, talk to you? There's bound to be a piece of property in town that's just as attractive as that piece of property. If not, he may know some more than were brought out tonight. But I would just ask you to consider that, because this is where your client base is, and you've got two customers sitting up here, maybe even a few more. But apologize that it took this long, but I think hearing everybody, I think it was well done. Okay. We'll move on to Gen. Item 14. Z-007-99, consideration interaction regarding the application of George Bachelor for a zoning change request on Lot 6, Block 6, Parkdale Gardens Edition, located on the east side of Delonte Street, north of Granton Street, from SF2 Single Family Residential-
And vote for expensive-
...to M1 Industrial District on the 2300 block of Delonte Street. This is under public hearing, and the public hearing is open on this agenda item. Mr. Eisen?
As you indicated in the caption, the proposal is to change the zoning on a piece of property to M1 Industrial District, which is consistent not only with the surrounding properties, but also with the land use plan.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here this evening?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. I don't know that we've got any questions for the applicant. This seems like to be a pretty simple thing. If we've got any, we'll bring you up, okay? So anyone else wishing to speak out of the four against this request? Hearing, seeing none, I think we'll close public hearing and move to the corresponding agenda item. Councilman McQuillanis, was that going to be for a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Let me read this into the record, and then you'll yield the floor. Ordinance number 0-1999-017-15, consideration interaction regarding approval of an ordinance admitting ordinance number 0-97-015-15, the comprehensive zoning ordinance of the City of Haltum City by changing the zoning classification of certain property known as being Lot 6, Block 5, Parkdale Gardens Edition, located on the east side of Delonte Street, north of Granton Street, from its present zoning classification of SF2 Single Family Residential District, to the proposed classification of M1 Industrial District in the 2300 block of Delonte Street. Councilman McQuillanis, the floor is yours.
Yes, sir. I appreciate it. I appreciate her staying through the evening. We really would have been better about moving her up, but that's okay. I appreciate it.
I didn't even, I didn't realize you were here for this one. We probably would have done that.
That's right. That's true. If we'd have known, we would have moved you up. But I do move to approve the ordinance as requested in item 15.
That's subject to staff call, staff-
Subject to any record, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Arp?
Second.
Motion is second. Please signify your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. It's a whole lot easier. You're not going to put a vet clinic down there, are you? Okay.
Probably made her nervous, that last one, though.
She was better ready to go get all this rendering. Okay, Gen. Item 16, CU-003-99, consideration interaction regarding the application of Randall Price for conditional use permit with site plan approval on lots 38, 39, Block 1, West Haltum City Edition, located on the southwest corner of northeast 28th Street and Owen Street to allow an auto sales facility on this site. Some public hearings, an open public hearing. Ask the city manager to brief us on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city's zoning ordinance requires that for auto sales to take place on a piece of property, the property must be zoned C4 and have a conditional use permit. The property in question already has C4 zoning, but the conditional use permit is required to authorize that particular use, and that is the applicant's intent, intended use for the property, auto sales.
Okay. Now, Councilman McQuillanis, you had a few questions for the applicant, did you not?
Yes, I did, just a couple.
If you would come forth this time.
Mr. Price, I appreciate you covering. I just had a couple of questions. I understand you've already done some of the changes that the staff is recommending or that the ordinance is required for development of this property. Is that right?
We've, you know, we do this through the site plan itself, yes. We've done some different things. We haven't done any major construction or anything like that, but we've done, there has been some changes made.
All right. And as far as the cost of what you've done, I don't mean the purchase price of the property, I mean the cost for complying with the ordinances. As far as what you've done and what you estimate to do to comply, what do you estimate the cost might be?
You know, right now, probably I've spent $1,200 to $1,500 just myself doing the site plan and getting a plot and doing the different things, you know, legally, well, what need to be done. But there's going to be some changes made as far as construction, cosmetically, is that what you're asking?
Correct, yeah. With all the landscape and the building and all, what's your plan?
It will range probably from $15,000 to $20,000, maybe $25,000. The question there is, I am not able, I have done the electricity, I don't know what is electrical or what's going to be there as far as changes there, some of the plumbing, the different things that are going to be there.
Now, another question, this may sound silly, but it's going to be auto sales. What kind of vehicles? Are you going to sell boats? You can sell vehicles, trailers, what?
It'll be mainly a used car facility. It'll range from, you know, late model cars to, you know, some older vehicles. It just depends on the dollar car.
Okay, that's all I have.
No fleas in any of the cars, or?
Not that I'm aware of. Any dollars.
I don't have any more questions.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Williams?
First question, are you going to have any dogs there?
No.
Four-wheeled or four-naked? I guess one of my questions is, when did you first apply for this?
I've tried or attempted, you know, I mean, it all, the beginning stage was in January. The application and all of that was, I believe, late February, once I went through the different planning, site plan, and the different questions that came up there.
Well, I own a business probably 300, 400 yards from you. And I've had a couple of the other people in the neighborhood, the residents, that's called me, concerned about the zoning change. One of them called and said, that's been a car lot for 45 years, why they want to put there? So I guess they were afraid, I guess they was afraid a vet clinic was going to go in there or something, you know? But-
I should have to think, it would be worse than a used car lot, John.
But I was, what I was wondering, you know, in the future, maybe the rest of, and I guess this may be a question for Wayne, to rest the mind of the people that live over in that area, this is not actually a zoning change, it's an amendment. It's a conditional use permit. Could we have one or two conditional use permit application signs made, put up instead of, because when you throw up a zoning request change, and people automatically, you know, will get a bunch of people thinking it's going to be something other than what it's rather misleading.
Gives them the wrong impression.
Yes, sir.
According to our zoning ordinance, this is considered to be an amendment to the zoning ordinance itself, but I don't know of anything in the ordinance that would not allow us to put up a sign that's more explicit as to what we're actually doing out there and explaining that this is a conditional use permit on that property.
So we probably wouldn't have more than one or two going at a time, would we?
No, we can check and see if it's valid.
That's something I would like to see staff look into. That way, there would be no misunderstanding, and I'm in line for motion whenever y'all are ready.
Okay. Councilmember Arp, comment, and I'll yield the floor back. Councilmember Arp?
I wanted to ask some questions. I drove by there and saw some weeds growing up, and the paving's kind of cracked. Are you planning on doing anything about the paving? Are you going to leave it as is? Or what are you going to do on that?
One of the first things that we're going to do, just to kind of let you, as council, know, I'm going to reseal the facility with just a sealant. I'm not going to do any asphalt work. As we said, I've had a couple people look at it. They said the asphalt's fine. It does have some cracks, does have some weeds that will be taken care of. They'll spray that with a weed killer. They'll be, I mean, it's going to be a completely different look. As you can see by the cost, I mentioned a while ago, as far as what we're proposing to do, I'll be changing the facade. There's a lot of different things that I have in plan here.
Okay.
That's what I wanted to hear, is that you're going to go in and do some changes to it?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Olenby?
I'm sorry. My hope in, with this, if we get to pass this tonight, is go ahead and make this a car lot that you, as the City of Haltum City, would be proud of, and that you guys could actually look at and say, this is what we want in that facility, if it is going to be a used car facility.
Yep. Thank you. Councilmember Hensley?
Quick question, Mr. Price. Do you own a business now in Haltum City?
I do not.
Okay. Did you explore other cities to set up this business, possibly?
I've been in the car business for 12, 13 years now. Okay. And so, I mean, I've been in Fort Worth, I've been in Arlington.
Okay. But this looked like an attractive, doable deal for you here, and yours obviously worth the investment to-
It had some potential, and that's what I'm wanting to do. I don't live too far from the Haltum City area. I live on the other side of 820.
Okay.
And it's close proximity to the house, and for what I'm wanting to do in the area, I think it'd be a very good location.
Okay. We appreciate you setting up shop here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Williams? The floor is yours, sir.
I'm sorry, I closed public hearing. I apologize.
Williams, the floor is yours.
First of all, I want to tell Mr. Price, I appreciate you choosing Haltum City. Appreciate your patience with us on getting this done for you, and be looking forward to seeing another. I've seen some Mr. Price's business in another town. He takes great pride in what he does. He had one over on the west side of Fort Worth for some time, and it was excellent business. They sold it, and it will be something of high quality that we'll be proud to have. So saying that, I make a motion to approve ordinance number 0-1999-018-15.
Councilmember Hensley?
It's for a second.
Okay. Motion, second. Please signify your vote. Motion passes unanimously. I might point out that this is the exact reason why we went to the conditional use on some of these facilities, because had we not had conditional use, someone not as upstanding as you might have just walked right in and ran another less substantial facility, let's say. And we appreciate you, Mr. Price. Sorry the lateness of hour, we apologize, but sometimes democracy takes a little longer than we'd like. But it all worked out for you. Thank you, sir.
Did you enjoy the meeting?
By the way, you get three college credits for government for having attended here. I don't believe there's anyone wishing to speak on the Citizens Forum, so we'll move on to 20, Second Quarter Financial Report. Due to the lateness of hour, is there, do we want Pat to do a full-blown presentation?[1695.12]